Okay, we're ready. Good night, everybody. And welcome to the Tuesday, February 16th, 2021, meeting of the Cohasset Select Board. It is 7:00 PM Eastern Time. Tonight's meeting is being conducted on the Zoom platform and live streamed on Cohasset 143 TV and on Cohasset's Facebook page. The public is invited to participate on the Zoom platform, which can be accessed using the link provided at the top of the posted agenda for tonight's meeting. The Zoom app is also can also be loaded onto any of your personal devices. Members of the board and other scheduled participants will be able to participate when called on by the chair. Board members will be able to ask questions of any participant of the meeting. All votes taken at this meeting will be by roll call. Members of the public who wish to ask questions are asked to utilize the question and answer feature on Zoom, including typing in their name and address for the public record. The Chair or Vice Chair will review the questions and direct them to the appropriate participant for a response. Please note that comments on Facebook will not be monitored during the meeting. This meeting is being recorded and will be available for later viewing on Cohasset 143 TV. So I'd like to open the meeting with a call to order. Jack?
Call to order, you mean?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Roll call. Oh, okay. Jack Creighton here.
Corey Evans here.
Diane Kennedy here.
Paul Schubert here.
Carrie Thompson here.
Great. We're all here, President accounted for, and we invite everyone to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. A allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, invisible.
Liberty, justice, for all.
Great. The first item on our agenda is always public comment. If there's anyone who's attending on the Zoom platform who would like to make a public comment on a matter that is not on our agenda, if you could do so by typing in your question, name and address in the question and answer feature, we'll give it a minute or so to let anybody who would like to do that flag us down for that. Otherwise, we will. You know, we will, at different points in the meeting, see if anybody has any questions. And again, we'll do that through the question and answer feature. Anybody typing?
I don't see any yet.
Okay. Then let's get rolling. We have a big agenda tonight. The first first up is a request for a permit for Earth Day for April 24th, 2021. I believe Peter Pescatori, he filled out the event permit application. Is he in the waiting room and should be promoted?
No, I don't see him yet, Diane. I just read. But the the applications in the pack, if you want to wait for him to get here.
Yeah, it's scheduled for 7:05 and we're just a few minutes shy of that. So if anybody has any general questions on the actual on the actual event application, we can kind of just discuss that before he joins us. If he doesn't join us, we'll deeper dive into it.
I will tell you that as per process, the application was presented to the Department of Health first. It was reviewed and Health Director Pam Fahy, he did get light. So we do have a copy of the COVID plan, which Justine has a copy of, if you'd like to see.
Chris, I know that we we brought this up generally last week or a couple of weeks ago. But have we had any? Has any community groups reached out to us for for event applications or socializing potential events in the summer?
This is the first one that we've actually, that I am aware of. That's I know there's been some talk about some little league, I think, is considering, you know, thinking about what they might be able to do for their opening day. And that's usually that's usually in March, I think. Have an application that I'm aware of. I know that they have one of their events involves the schools, so they would go to the schools for that one. They would typically have the opening day party and I'm not aware that they've actually submitted that. Again, if anything comes in, we'll go right to to Pam Faith.
Okay, Carrie?
Yeah, just looking this event over, it seems like a perfect event to have, considering that it's outside. People are spread out. It's going to be mostly safe, I think. So for any event to be a good one to have, I think it's this one for sure.
Yeah, I agree. So it is 7:05. I would like to just kind of substantively start talking about it. If Peter joins in, we will certainly promote him immediately. Jack, you had your question?
Yeah, I think this is a I strongly support this. This is kind of a Cohasset tradition. You know, at the end of winter time, we have a lot of trash and stuff. So that needs to be picked up. But it really is when everybody gets to pitch in and make a beautiful town even more beautiful. So when it's appropriate time, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the permit for Earth Day on April 24th.
Any other questions from from the board? What I'll do just for the public's knowledge is just kind of walk through the details on the application. And then we can move on. Let let Jack make his motion. So Earth, the this is an observation of Earth Day. It's a request for an Earth Day townwide cleanup on Saturday, April 24th, 2021, from 9:00 AM to 2:30 PM at various locations in town. It's not a fundraiser or anything. It's really just as as Jack mentioned earlier, to remove trash from along the road sides and different community groups may get involved. The idea and working with the Health Department was, you know, to make sure that people are dispersed throughout town and there's not lots of people. And obviously, they'll be appropriately masked, et cetera. There's going to be a dumpster in the back of Town Hall, which is another thing that's part of the application that we need to approve within the same motion. And that's about it. Again, it's it's something that we've been doing for probably five or six years and it's a great a great community event. And I think it really, boy, I mean, we're looking forward to anything at this point. So I think we're all excited about the prospect of being outside doing anything. So Paul?
So one of the great things is the week after, if you drive around town, how clean the roadside is when you're just driving along or walking along or riding on, you know, bike. It really is remarkable and to realize there's just dumpsters of junk that get thrown out. It really raises you kind of raise your spirits when you're driving around town.
Well, it'll be interesting to just see how much trash, whether there's a differential in trash this year with fewer people kind of out and about and and in prior years. So it's just a little little geeky stat that we can pay attention to.
Well, I I really enjoy sitting there watching all these residents of quote Tony Cohasset coming in with muddy boots, their their clothing covered with debris and mud and carrying trash bags over. I just, I think it's so cool. And people have a very good time. And anybody who hasn't done it before, it's really a good time. Just show up. You give given a trash bag and go to it. It's a great day.
And then we'll sign you up for a committee while we're at it.
Don't tell them that. Come on, Diane, then they won't show up.
Retract that statement. All right, any other questions from the board? Peter Hasn't appeared in the peanut gallery. For some reason, I can't read who's in there.
So I don't see him, but I think we're all probably okay with approving it without him.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to move that we approve Earth Day cleanup on Saturday, April 24th, including the placement of a dumpster in the Town Hall.
Is there a second?
Down parking lot.
Thank you. Not in Town Hall, please. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Jack Creighton, I.
Corey Evans, I.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Paul Schubert, I.
Carrie Thompson, I.
Great, thank you. So Carrie, it looks like there's a comment. We took the vote, maybe just read the comment if you get the person's name.
Let's see. We have one comment from an Adam with no address saying the AEC wants to include a soapbox derby in the Earth Day.
Okay.
Not sure what that means. And then from Brianna Bennett saying, can permit applications for an Earth Day event on April 24th still be submitted and approved next week? I believe it's right at the 60-day mark.
So the the answer is, I mean, I think anything that is going to be part of Earth Day, as long as it goes through the Open Space and Rec Commission in terms of being included as what they're doing and would fall safely under. And they would be able to and probably would need to go to Pam Fahy too, Chris, let me know. But if it's another adjunct activity that's kind of on its own and just wants to happen during that day, it would require a separate application. And as soon as it gets in and through the approval process in Town Hall, which will include the Department of Health, then yes, we can certainly entertain that. Does that make sense to the board?
So Adam just followed up Diane saying that we submitted information to Peter to amend the Earth Day celebration application, but it did not get to the meeting.
Okay. Okay, so let's, Chris, if we could, if we could follow up on any addendums to that, including both Adam's question and Brianna's question, find out whether it's okay and packaged within that, we could take it up at our next meeting. Good, everybody? Okay. And you know, typically, our approval process for events for a whole bunch of reasons and because we set policies and guidelines for it a number of years ago is 60 days. I think under the current circumstances, you know, our policy right now is to review things as they come in because it's, there's a lot of things we can't do. So you know, if somebody has a brilliant, wonderful way to do a safe project, please bring it to Town Hall. It's I'm not like seeking it, but you know, I don't know that the 60 days is as firm as it needs to be. We just need to make sure we have enough time to review everything. But I would like to see more weekend type things like this that don't involve everybody clustering together in one place. Okay. Moving right along. And we also have we have two appointments today. And I just before we get into this, I just want to say that next week on our agenda, we are going to have a bigger discussion about committee appointments. And just trying to each each year at this time, we start reaching out for people to apply to committees. There's also a lot of committee openings currently. So we'll have a, there's hopefully some appointments next week and also a discussion just on a process for both reaching out to the community and soliciting interest and then also how to evaluate those applications when they come in because it's it's an imperfect process and has been for quite some time. So to the extent that we can make it a little bit better and encourage people to sign up for committees or put their name in for committees, the the better our government will be. So right now, I don't know if we have Mike Dickey or Woody Chittick in the in the gallery and also Tom Callahan and or Russ Benetti. If not, I'll kind of walk through what we're doing.
None of them are in the audience at the moment.
At least I'm watching too. I don't see any yet.
So the now we at 7:15. Okay, the CPC is the Planning Board representative to CPC. And in our packets, we had a vote that the Planning Board took in July, actually, to nominate Planning Board member Tom Callahan as the rep to Community Preservation Committee, something that just didn't get up the flagpole to us to to actually make the appointment. So that's the first order of business. If anybody has any questions or would like to make a motion?
I move that we appoint Tom Callahan as the CPC Planning Board rep.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Lots of seconds. Okay, roll call, please, Jack.
Jack Creighton, I.
Corey Evans, I.
Diane Kennedy, I, sorry.
Paul Schubert, I.
Carrie Thompson, I.
Great, there's there's CPC is another committee that's going to be very busy at work in the next, the upcoming weeks. And obviously, they they have they have another citizen position open. So we will probably address that next week. And then the zoning board, if you remember a couple of weeks ago, we moved one of the associate members up into a full ZBA member when Peter Gerdiker retired. And this is a request by ZBA to make the appointment to the associate position of Mike Dickey. His application was in our packets. And you know, the one thing if I can say about him is Mike served on the planning board for a number of years. So this, I think ZBA is a good place for that kind of experience in kind of the practical applications of our zoning bylaws. So you know, I think this is a really strong appointment. Any questions or discussion? Okay, I'll look for a motion.
I make a motion that we appoint Mike Dickey to the zoning board of appeals, associate position.
Is there a second? Okay, roll call, beginning with Jack.
Jack Creighton, I.
Corey Evans, I.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Paul Schubert, I.
Carrie Thompson, I.
Okay. Also, on the on the committee conversation and something I'm hoping we can do next week, if we have enough applications, is the school building committee, which we have spoken about a number of times, the school committee is very anxious to get that convened. It is a committee of nine people. If you remember, three are appointed by the school committee, three are appointed by the Select Board and three by the Troika. So there are maybe, I think there are three application, there's five applications in total. School committee is anxious to at least move on three of them and we would need to at least appoint two or three so that they have a quorum and can can start that. That is a multi-year, long-term process. So they need people with finance experience, building experience, you know, infrastructure, school bonding, anything like that is going to bring. And obviously, residents of Cohasset bring a lot of interest and talent to that committee. So keep your ears open for people that might be good and encourage them to fill out an application. And we'll again, bring this up next week. Okay. More administrative work makes me feel good to get all these boxes checked off. We have the updated harbor infrastructure working group charge. We we approved in concept the creation of an infrastructure working group. We had a draft charge last week. The charge was updated and mailed to everybody in their packets. And I see Tim Davis Chair is joining us. So I just wanted to, what we need to do tonight is vote that as the charge for infrastructure working group committee and answer any questions anybody has so that that can start getting going once we have some applications in. Tim, do you want to say anything? You're on mute.
Unmute my audio.
There you go.
Better?
That's better.
Thank you, all of you who serve on the Select Board for supporting this plan. We are ready to go and looking for members for both the working group for the infrastructure and also the soon to come working group for governance. A lot of people are interested in getting rolling up their sleeves and getting going. So thank you for approving this and getting us to move on.
Thanks, Tim, for your work. Any questions? Okay, is there a motion to approve the harbor infrastructure working group charge?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please, beginning with Jack.
Jack Creighton, I.
Corey Evans, I.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Paul Schubert, I.
Carrie Thompson, I.
Great.
Thank you all.
Thank you for us, Tim. Make things happen. Um, where are we for time? Because we're running pretty early, if anything.
You're running about 10 minutes early, Diane. That said, your next folks are in the audience, ready to go.
Okay.
And it's it's given as an update, it's not a public hearing.
So next up is a discussion or presentation on PFAS from the Cohasset Water Department and Jason Federico. Jason, I'll turn the mic over to you.
Awesome, Chris, can you get me screen sharing so I can show the presentation?
And Chris, are any of the commissioners, I'm sorry, in the audience? For some reason, I can't see.
I know, Steve is there and Lee is Steve Jordan is there and Lee is there.
And Steve.
Okay.
So this is an update on where we're at as far as PFAS is concerned with the water system here tonight. Lee Jenkins is here and Fred Rogers, who is the area manager for Wooded and Current, is actually in attendance as well. So what is PFAS, just the update? That you've heard about it a lot from Chief Sylvia in the past with the the fire department. It's a family of thousands of compounds regulated currently for the water. There's six of those. They're extremely stable, heat and stain resistant. You found them in cookware and fire retardant equipment. Regulations to date, back in 2018, DP was regulating to a level of 70 parts per trillion. We had sampling done at that time and with non-detect due to the level of testing we went to. In 2019, they amended the regulations to come down to 20 parts per trillion. And it became officially a regulation as of this year. Just as clarification is what a part per trillion is. Part per trillion is one drop of water in 20 Olympic-sized swimming pools. So the right, what what we're regulated to is basically one drop in one pool. So you talk about 20 parts per trillion, it's one drop of contaminant in one Olympic-sized swimming pool. Monitoring regulations that are currently in place, they start January of this year for large systems and then come back, come down from there. We actually took advantage of free sampling from the state and we're being proactive. We want to know if there was an issue, we wanted to know about it sooner than later. So we actually started our sampling in the summer of 2020. She declared, just as an update, where our water comes from. About 90% of the water comes from the Lily Pond Reservoir for my family, which includes the Aaron River Reservoir and actually extends into Norwell Situate and Hingham as well. And then we have our well field at Elm Meadow, which is downtown, if you don't know about it. And about 10% of the water supply comes from there. So our timeline to date, we had our initial round of sampling in June of 2020. The wells were offline from through July and into the beginning of October. We continued sampling throughout the the summer and into the winter. As you can see, Elm's Meadow was consistently in the 18 to 17 range. But then in January, we had an elevated level of 25 parts per trillion. We shut down the well at that point in time. But at the same time, Lily Pond, where the majority of the water comes from and also distribution samples, were well below the 20 parts that is the regulation.
Jason, do you mind if I interrupt and ask a question? Does our water, does the Elm's Meadow water blend into the other water and then get distributed out?
No, it gets, it comes directly in on James Lane. So the the water, it gets introduced to the system in at James Lane, but does blend into the system. It's not, it's not a direct line to anybody's location. It all just blends as it pumps into the system.
Okay.
So as part of this, once you have a level over 20, we do a public notification. Our short-term corrective actions were we shut the well off as soon as we we knew there was an issue. Long-term corrective actions, we're going to evaluate all these options, including installing treatment at the site. The well may may remain permanently shut off. Blending is an option and and or installing new wells someplace in town, someplace else in town. So as I said, once you hit the over 20, we have a public education that'll be going out next week. It's a lot of legal paper, information that's required by the state based on the regulations. It's not an MCL valuation. And it will be sent out at some point between, within the 30 days of the original results being received by the town. There's financial resources at state level for this, these issues. This $8.4 million that was set aside, the first round with about 2 million went to 10 systems. And there were applications due December of 2020 for this round. We took advantage of the free sampling in the first round and we applied for 182,500 for piloting and design at Elm's Meadow proactively in December. And then I will turn it over to you guys for any questions you have.
Great, thank you. Paul?
So in the past, there was the Sawyer Street Well Field. Is that an option? Can that ever be reintroduced into the water supply?
Sawyer Street's the ones behind the Little League. Unlike, I believe those have been basically permanently abandoned at this point in time.
Jack?
Yeah, I'm very concerned about what happened to Elm's Meadow. That was evidently the best water we had in town. Where do these contaminants come from? I mean, what, I assume that there are things that are dumped there or whatever. But can you give us some background as to why and what? And what what is actually contaminating it? Is it yard waste? Is it chemicals dumped there? Do you know?
There's no real smoking gun in this situation. Typically speaking, on a site where you have a PFAS, you'd see firefighting phones like near a airport or historic fire event where firefighting phones were used. You could see it in wastewater effluent. So if you have the septic systems on the on the hillside that were historically there when PFAS was still in a lot of products, those leaching fields still have the the chemicals in them and it can leach into the system. You could have a leaking sewer pipe there that that's infiltrating wastewater in to the site. At this point, we don't know, there's no smoking gun on this site as to where the the chemical, where the where the issue came from.
I know there's been not only residential lawn waste and landscape waste, but I know that there's been some commercial yard waste, landscaping waste that has been dumped there historically. And would would that be a source?
There's no known source in in yard waste. Yard waste would be a source of other contaminations, but not for PFAS.
Okay.
Carrie, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, we have a question from Jay Pimpari asking, what is the town considering for treatment options? A simple GAC system might do the trick, getting below state regulatory standard.
Yes, we have our pilot application in for both PFAS and resident, I mean, I GAC and resin.
And and just just kind of a follow up on that. So that application that you submitted in December is is something that would remediate potentially this particular issue.
Okay, yep. But so they will, we will evaluate that too. If it, it becomes then to what's the long-term cost of operations too. So once we get that, once we get that upfront piloting done, we'll know, one, what the construction costs will be. And but then also the long-term cost. So one of the options, one of the things we actually have on the slate right now for for the Springtown meeting is to in to do GAC at Lily Pond for two, for unrelated issues. But it actually helps even take off the small amount of PFAS is there. But there is a significant long-term operational cost there. So for for Lily Pond, it's it's the tune of about $300,000 a year in operations cost to add GAC. So it's not an insignificant fix.
Is there any state funding for that kind of stuff? For just kind of ongoing operational things with these?
Yeah, you get funding for the construction potentially, but not. You get funding for the construction potentially, but not for O and M costs.
Great. Corey has a question and then Paul.
Yeah, thanks, Jason, for showing that. Chris or Jason, could you get me the version you just showed us because the draft that was sent around is missing some slides. I specifically want to look at the the reservoir kind of overlay that you just had, but I can't find it in the in the draft that you guys sent.
This one here, I can send, I could send this over to you.
Thanks very much.
No problem.
Yeah, to send this whole presentation since it's a little different. Paul?
So the the GAC, I presume that's an activated charcoal system?
Yep.
Okay, so I mean, these are very stable compounds, which is one of the problems. Well, I guess one of the other option would be like a reverse osmosis system, which would be extraordinarily expensive. Is the activated charcoal system adequate?
Yep. So, oh, a bit piloted to confirm that, but typically there's never been a scenario that I've seen where where the GAC wouldn't work. And it's funny, when when I went through this presentation, it was taken out for for content and time purposes. The the this was a DP presentation and they had noted that reverse osmosis is is an option. But the waste is the worst. It creates a concentrated waste product. The benefit of GAC over that or resin is the route you can reactivate the the GAC and by reactivating it, you you burn it. And therefore you burn off the PFAS. So they can still reuse the deactivated carbon for other things like a carbon filter for a wastewater treatment plan or order control. So it still has a use after being used for PFAS removal.
Corey?
Just just quickly out of curiosity, if we have the pump off, we're not in any risk of, you know, if we're just pulling from the reservoir, we're not in any risk of over drawing the reservoir or anything like that. There's plenty of overhead in the system. So even if there's some, even if the pump that we can't fix this immediately, it's not going to be really a crisis for the town. Is that?
No, we're not in a crisis mode. If anything, you might see water restrictions go in place earlier next year. But realistically, there'd be the only other cost is there's going to be more overtime at the plant because they'll be running more hours at Lily Pond to make up for that. So basically that pump station would run 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And to Jack's point, it was easier to treat water. So it was kind of a set it and forget it location versus Lily Pond that needs a lot more handholding.
Yeah, so Lily Pond is a little bit more expensive to get water out of because of the filtration and all that stuff. Is that?
Yep.
Okay.
That makes sense. Jack's?
Is it customary to drill kind of test wells in the general area to see if it's a widespread contaminant?
If you're trying to find a a source, you would drill wells, yes, all around it. And then continue to sample, trying to find where the plume quote unquote is coming from. But when you're talking about parts per trillion, trying to trace a part per trillion may cost you more money than just dealing with it. Because you, unless you know you're going to find a smoking gun person or party, there's no one to pay for the cost once you're done. You may have found the contamination source, but unless somebody's going to pay for the O and M, you're you're you wasted a lot of money finding out that it came from a leaking sewer pipe or old septic systems.
Or somebody could have just taken a barrel and rolled it off the back of a truck in there 10 years ago.
Yes.
Carrie, I see that there's a question, do you mind or comment?
Yeah, follow up from Jay Pimpari saying something to consider while there is no regulatory criteria on water quality just yet. It is coming and the SRF program should also be explored for the wastewater plant as well.
Jason, can you say what SRF is? Do you know?
State revolving fund. So we're actually targeting the.
I'm thinking science, it's money. Got it.
So it's an annual program that comes out from the state in August for water and wastewater and stormwater projects. And the the we're going to target the GAC at Lily Pond to for that funding. And in a time like this, when we're in economic recovery in the past during the era funding, there was principal forgiveness and or 0% dirt through that process. So we're going to submit and see what happens to see if we can potentially either get some principal forgiveness or better interest rate for that project. It's it's a it's a fairly pricey project. So we're going to try and get the best bang for our buck.
Great. Paul had a question and then Jack is your hand up again?
Yeah, no.
Okay, I'll take Paul first.
So for the average house, would an activated charcoal system filtering either on the input or let's say at the tap, would that be a means to filter?
Yep. Generally speaking, that the the PFAS would come out with an activated carbon Brita filter style system.
How many Brita filters are in that swimming pool? We're trying to find that one PFAS.
No, I I'm done.
Yeah, okay. Just because I I want to stall a little bit because we're ahead of time. Should have backed all this other stuff up. But you know, one, one question, which I think is safe to kind of follow the thread on a little bit. And if the water commissioners are listening and want to weigh in, but you know, one thing we have talked about many times to Jack's point is the contamination of of landscape waste in Elm's Well Field. And I know that there's been discussion about somehow protecting it or fencing it or whatever the the options are. And I just wondered, Jason, if that's something that the Water Commission is going to ask again for in some way for town meeting.
Potentially not for town meeting, but it's going to be, it's going to be a topic of conversation fencing in general as far as water is concerned. We have a couple of different reports being done right now and all of them are referencing how wide open our treatment plant location is as far as security is concerned. And that would lead to Elm's Meadow as well. So we may be putting up fencing around the water treatment plant. Because of site security, DP is concerned as well as we're doing an AWEA study that's a federal study. So you may see fencing come up and we probably will be looking at fencing at Elm's Meadow too. When we reactivate the well field, when and if we do put treatment on that site, we'll probably put a fence up at the same time.
Right. I mean, certainly the integrity of the water supply and the security of it is is huge. And in particular, where the restrictions rightly are getting stronger and stricter. You know, it to me, it sounds like unfunded mandate material. And you know, I I just think we need to be, keep this on our radar and be as smart as we can be about finding sources and trying to protect and filter and do everything we can, but also find a way to 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 fund this because this is just going to keep getting, you know, the regulations aren't going to get more relaxed on water. It's just, you know, it's going to absolutely go in the other direction and we need to be very smart about that. So therefore, I, Lee Jenkins, Water Commissioner, I'll give you the floor.
Hi there. Yes, I have been listening to your discussion and I can give you a little background about the well field. As to the question about the Sawyer Well Fields, when Wilcott Commons was built, we gave up the well field over there. That's why it's never going to be active again. But this well field, people do not realize that we spent a million and a half dollars reactivating the well heads and building the pumping station. It was initially put on as a seasonal operation and six years ago, we insulated it. So that we're operating that well field now at 60% of the cost for water of water coming out of the plant. And between that and other financial strategies that we put in place over the last several years, we've been able to complete some mandatory regulations and infrastructure and maintenance items without going into additional bonding, which people should be very happy about. And another thing, I'm sure you guys realize with Earth Day coming up that we have been participating in that. And for the last 10 years, we've had a program trying to get people to stop dumping in that area. We've put up brand new signs, several of them. We've had the Mariner down there for several different articles. We've been online. We have had Bill Stuffers and I want to reach out to Carrie and thank her for putting the information on her Facebook page. We also had it on Cohasset 143 about the importance of protecting this area. We've reached out to garden clubs, the Boy Scouts and the school. We've put up even cameras and I was so disappointed last year when we saw two students dumping a wheelbarrow of unknown substance right next to the sign that said, no dumping. When we reached out to the school, the school said, sorry, can't help you, but we're really, really involved in protecting the water supply. So we're sending the kids down to the beach tomorrow to clean up.
Right.
So, but I would, I would prefer if people would take an active part in Earth Day, we have that area to clean up. It would be nice instead of having it look like a dump. We've even reached out to Norfolk County and we had their workers there for a week cleaning up and we filled the whole dumpster. But then it got filled in right away. And we could make that area a nice prime location to have native plants instead of the invasives and attract birds, butterflies and bees, all the pollinators everybody's talking about that are dying. You know, and unfortunately, we even applied to CPC twice for the special town meeting in 2019. We were rejected. They told us to come back for the 2020 Annual Town Meeting. We had two applications that were put in in February. One of them was about the graffiti, which they passed right away. The other one was about the well field and they refused to even put it on their agenda from February to May. So we never even got a hearing with them.
Well, let's um, let's, let's take that conversation to someplace else for another, for another.
Talking about Earth Day and trying to clean up this area, which we've been talking about.
And that's great. And I think I I I think it's, you know, we were all excited about Earth Day because it's it's an event and it's something for us to look forward to. And maybe this, yeah, and maybe this, yeah, maybe we can do a lot more coordination from within the town in terms of making sure, you know, the Water Commission and their messages are getting disseminated and.
Well, I know, and Jack was also listening to his comments about his concern about what's being dumped on the welfare. Because we really don't know. And you know, another concern about the PFAS. PFAS is also in paint waxes and commercial cleaners. And we don't know what type of containers people are using to bring the stuff they're dumping onto the well field. And it could be a container that contained any of these contaminants. We have no clue.
I think that goes to just the general like security of our of our water source. Corey has a question?
Yeah, exactly. I think I was going to pivot to that kind of the general security kind of question. And you know, one thing about that well field is, you know, you've got a train that goes by, the train has brakes and there's brake, you know, brake pads have dust and then you have trucks going by. I mean, I I'm wondering if if we maybe at a certain point be pushing a rock uphill, trying to maintain that well field. And you know, maybe the resources have been spent trying to protect or improve the reservoir. Thoughts about that long term? Is this really a long term, you know, option, you think? Or is it just development around it presenting us with an unwinnable scenario?
Oh, I don't know. I, you know, it has been a very active resource for the town for so many years. And we just have to see what's going to come out of our pilot study to see what they have to say. But you know, you take a look at where the levels are and as Jason so well explained, it's, you know, miniscule compared to anything. So, and don't forget, the federal level is 90 and we're down at 20.
Wow.
So, yeah, this several states have gotten different levels of concern in this. So this is something that's going to be an ongoing project. And you know, and then we don't know what's going to be happening with Lily Pond. We're keeping an eye on that because, you know, we have all that activity on Peppermint Brook, which drains right into Lily Pond. I was really surprised where our numbers came from. I was presuming that we would have had high numbers at Bound Brook coming from the reservoir because of all the munitions dumps and everything in Wampanoak, because that's where the reservoir water is. But apparently it's not there and where we tested it is more coming from where Peppermint Brook comes in.
So to your point though, Corey, yes, it it it's a tough site long term, given its proximity to homes and development. And yes, that might get to the point of even if we get the money for the piloting, we have to look at long term. What's the cost both to construct and then maintain that system? Once we get that information, so.
Um, just to Carrie, go ahead and then I'll.
Yeah, thank you, Lee and Jason. And I know we've been talking about the well field for a while. I do think we need to seriously think about other ways to secure it. Are are we missing anything? Are other towns doing anything to better secure their water supply that we aren't doing? And is Cohasset comparable to other Massachusetts towns in terms of where our numbers are at for the water quality?
Oh, we are on the leading edge of testing. So we'll find out in the next six months where everybody else lies. So not quite sure where we're going to come out. I think you're going to see a lot of towns having the same issue within the next six months. I think a significant number. Anybody that has a well anywhere near developed area is going to have this issue. So when you think about it, it is really, when you look at this graphic, Elm's Meadow is downtown. It's or it's not on my screen, but it's downtown. There's things on all four sides.
Yep.
Even though like Lee was saying that she expected to see it at Aaron River, it it's a huge volume of water with a very few contamination sources around it. Some houses, but the volume of water on a from a single septic system on that volume of water is a lot less than on the on the groundwater. Those wells at Elm's Meadow are only 30 feet deep. They're not, they're not, they're very shallow wells and it's a very small fissure of 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 a source there. There's only a small fracture in the bedrock that's filled with gravel. So it's a very confined source. So that I think that's, I don't know, one of the question was to begin with, but.
Yeah, well, no, but one other thing that you have to keep in mind that with Jason here instigating it, we have been extremely proactive in our testing because according to the state regulations for towns our size, we're not supposed to be testing until October of this year. But we were very concerned. We wanted to make sure we were ahead of the game. So we started testing early and to answer your question, Carrie, it's probably going to be another year before we can give you any information about equivalent towns and well water because it's smaller systems.
So we're we're now actually exactly where I wanted us to be in terms of time. Corey had a hand up. Did you have anything to say?
I was, no, we can continue another time.
Okay. So just one thing that came to my mind as we're talking about this, and this is something for Chris and Jason, maybe to to talk internally about. But given Earth Day coming up and one of the things I've been doing is participating in a lot of webinars on various things. I wonder if we create a few conversations or webinars on these kind of environmental topics that are stressing our municipal government and ultimately might result in something on town meeting warrant to ask people to pay for. But have it really focused on just different environmental issues and what the town's doing and what infrastructure we have. Putting together two or three of them way way ahead of time, we can just play them as kind of conversations as part of like an Earth Week, Earth Day Week, you know, series of events. So just something to consider because I think this is really fascinating. I don't, you know, I don't think it's anything we can even give enough time to amongst ourselves at a select board meeting, but it's something that I think a lot of people have interest in. So anyway.
Moves us right into the sewer discussion.
That's right. Perfect. Speaking of, this is not dogs' waste, but human waste. Jason and Lee, thank you very much for your work.
Thank you for having us this evening.
All right. And then Chris or Justine, if you could promote. All right. And then, uh, Chris or Justine, if you could promote, um, whoever's going to be speaking and presenting on the sewer decision matrix. Um, this is a, a long time a coming and, um, hopefully everybody has some questions. So we can have a robust conversation and then, uh, set out some next steps. And welcome to our sewer commissioners, including our new one, Paul Kears. Wayne Sawchuk and Bill McGowan is somewhere maybe. Um, Brian, am I turning the floor over to you for introductions and tuning up the conversation?
A brief overview is, um.
Who's going to do the presentation tonight, Brian? Do you want Justine to run it for you?
Uh, so Jeff, I was hoping Jeff, we could, should, could share his screen.
Yeah, if I could share it, I made a couple tweaks since the draft that I gave to Brian.
Thanks, Jeff. So I guess I'll, I'll just give a brief intro and then Jeff, you can take over with the presentation. So back in December, we had a discussion on, um, you know, sewer, uh, with respect to the regional sewer discussions before that and other sewer issues in town. And, um, the recommendation for the board was to hire a third-party consultant to, um, to synthesize all of, you know, the information and issues around Cohasset Sewer. Uh, the environmental aspect, uh, aspects, the sewer plant capacity aspects, development, um, all those things. So we, uh, we brought GHD and Jeff Gregg on board, um, and Jeff, uh, was given a task, to come up with a strategic planning document, a decision matrix, which would help us, uh, you know, further discussions on where we want to go with sewer, in, in the town in the future. Um, so again, this is not a new study. It was basically, uh, a comprehensive, I'll say a condensation of all the previous studies and information into a digestible form so that we can, you know, have a, have a good discussion on where we should go. So again, no, no new data and Jeff is going to, he's, he's even condensed the presentation a little bit further to, to, um, to make it a little easier to, uh, I guess digest tonight. Um, so with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to Jeff, um, to go through the presentation. Thanks.
Thank you, Brian. Uh, can everyone hear me all right?
Yep, you're good. Thanks, Jeff.
Good. All right. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, yes, my name's Jeff Gregg. I am a senior project manager with GHD, an engineering consulting firm. And what, uh, I'll be doing is walking you through some of the things that came up during the stakeholder meetings and how we've compiled that into, um, a matrix of decisions and some questions that have come up with regards to how the town might move forward. So what I wanted to do is start with this slide that outlined some of the questions that came up as part of that process and, um, how the town will might look forward to dealing with these in the future. Essentially, the town was part of the regional phase one planning effort with, uh, Situit and Hall. And as part of that, they completed a phase one report, which was like a needs assessment and screening analysis. And they wanted to, now they're, they're ready to move forward into phase two. But one of the questions that came up is, well, what's, what is that going to be? What is the scope of work going to look like and what kind of, um, role will Cohasset have in forming some of the outline of that scope? So that it might be able to address some of the things that Cohasset are, are important to Cohasset. Uh, the questions like timing and costs associated with if the town of Cohasset decide to do their own comprehensive management wastewater management plan. What happens if the whole connection, uh, is no longer available in the same, either in the same capacity as now or a different capacity? What does that mean for Cohasset? Is there a way that the town can deal with failed or failing septic systems, uh, by extending their existing collection system? Are there, uh, other regional solution options with just Situit as a partner? How does the town want to prioritize their needs, uh, for wastewater? And how also is the town going to be looking at addressing land use and other sewer expansion needs? So in looking at your existing system, um, you have your North Cohasset Sewer District, which is in the, uh, hatched, um, purplish color. I know the other portions of the existing system are hard to see, but you have the area around, uh, Little Harbor. And then you have the main part of your system, uh, the Cohasset Sewer District. And then the other shaded colored areas were developed as part of that phase one needs assessment of areas that aren't sewered, uh, currently in the town. And then as part of that phase one report, uh, five areas were essentially identified as, um, uh, needs for moving forward, the areas that the town and as part of the regional plan were, areas of interest, including area three, which is over by South Main Street, area six, uh, Brewster Road area, and then the Route 3A corridor. So that's the one A, B and C. So building off of that, then one of the other things that was done as an exercise as part of this process was looking at, what does this mean with regards to your existing facility? So you have an existing permit of about 450,000 gallons per day on average wastewater that you can treat at your existing treatment plant. You're using about 70% of that, about 320,000 and change. There are some areas that you may, you know, need to manage within that, which would be things like infilling. So connecting properties that are within your existing collection system, uh, service areas, but aren't currently connected. Maybe they aren't developed yet. Uh, there's the potential of emergency connections. And then there's also if something changed with how you were partnering with Hall and you decided to take that flow back. Uh, all of those things at whatever those flow values, and these were just placeholders, the 20,000 gallons per day listed here. Would chip away at your balance that you have. So you roughly have about 130,000 gallons per day. You need to reserve some of that, um, as part of your existing system. What's important to note is that when you hit 80% of your capacity, then that triggers you to actually, uh, dictate what your plan is going to be to manage that last 20% and then, and then even moving forward. And then the rest of the, oh, yep, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted you to, um, comment on the, the, the list, um, here, 1B, 361C, 1A. That's not necessarily in a priority or priority order.
Correct. So what, what this is, is we were doing an act, we, we developed this as sort of an exercise. So what I did is I picked the, the first five here are areas that were identified as the phase one plan. And then the next four were other areas that came up sort of in general discussion as we were talking about various different parts of the town. And the flows were average values that came from the planning that was done as part of the phase one report. Um, so I kind of merged a couple of different values that had been developed, uh, by the consultant for that, just to give you some perspective. So they could be moved around and the point of the exercise was that if you wanted to move a particular part of the 3A corridor up or down, you could see how it might impact your, um, your overall flow. And so this was just one snapshot of one possible layout. So it was really, this is really just to talk about sort of what the, you know, the tools and exercise that we kind of did. But what it demonstrates is that you're, you're at 72% now. If you deal with infilling or, or some of your existing system, you, you're, you could potentially be at 80% fairly quickly.
Right.
And then you have to start making some decisions.
I want to try to be mindful of, of the rhythm of the presentation, Jeff, and I, I just, uh, you know, didn't pay attention to my own comments, but Corey has his hand up. So since we're, we're broken, I'm going to ask him for his comments. Then I, you know, unless there's, you're looking for clarification on the information, I'd ask everybody to hold their comments till the end. And then we can go back to any of these slides. So Corey.
Yeah, mine, just a clarification point. So you have infilling for existing, but for the additional 1B, 36, the additional areas, did you include infill in these numbers or are these just existing?
So what I did is I took, uh, as part of the phase one report, they developed two different sort of planning numbers.
Right.
And they were kind of, they sort of bracketed some flows and I just averaged those because I wasn't, my task wasn't really to develop new data for you. And I, I didn't have enough information on whether to pick this, this approach or that approach for the flow. So this was really to give you a.
Sort of an average.
An average and really for discussion purposes.
Yeah, thanks very much.
Yep.
Um, so I'll, I guess I'll continue on. Um, so that, so what? So from that, we started discussing, well, what, you know, what are the tools for the town to be able to reach some decisions and deal with planning with regards to wastewater? Uh, the most obvious is you, you started the phase one regional effort and that came to, came to a point. Uh, and so there's the potential for the phase two regional planning effort. Uh, you could engage in a comprehensive wastewater management plan, which is town, which is really a town-wide and town-focused plan. If you feel that there are things that the phase two report isn't going to, um, answer for you because it is a bigger, it's even bigger picture because it involves two other communities. Um, so that's a way for you to do with, deal with that. You could deal with a wastewater facilities plan, which tends to be more focused on your existing infrastructure that you have with some limited expansion. But it's really focused on how, how to deal with what you have and assess the conditions and things that you have going on for you. And then if you didn't move forward with any kind of planning effort, you just kind of move forward as if you would with your existing system now. Needs and issues come up, you have to, you're going to have to deal with them, but they don't really involve any major sewer extensions per se. You're just sort of dealing with, um, uh, various different needs as they arise. So as part of the, the exercise that we did with the stakeholders is, is we GHD had developed a number of different Venn diagrams, which are these ways of sort of visually looking at, uh, where different areas of concern or issues fall within a particular topic. And so this one that I'm showing here was sort of the last of the Venn diagrams, which dealt with the various different planning processes. So the dark blue circle is comprehensive wastewater management planning. And you can see most of the topics all fall within that. And then where they overlap with other circles indicates that those may be topics that are dealt with, um, between comprehensive planning, facilities, planning, or maybe all three could deal with that issue. The only real outlier is due to the timing of the fact that, uh, Hall and Situit are ready to move into phase two. And, uh, you have an existing IMA and there's, there is another, there's a phase two planning effort potentially out there. That one kind of stays on its own, uh, for that reason. Then each of the boxes represented, uh, groupings of various different concerns that were raised during the stakeholder meeting. So they either were focused on areas of town, like the planning priority areas or failed septic systems, or they dealt with the existing infrastructure and facilities, like dealing with your wastewater permit, your capacity, how your treatment plant's performing redundancy. And then there were some other town-driven issues, like the town really wants to clean up the harbor in the Gulf. Um, is there the potential to deal with, uh, Situit, uh, individually? Our satellite treatment facilities and option, um, things of that nature. And what we did is we took those various different, uh, Venn diagrams and we compiled them into, um, a matrix table. And so essentially what the matrix table does is the very first column talks about the various different communities, um, that we're considering. And the second column from the left deals with your various different needs. So the failed septic systems or, uh, infrastructure or, um, capital needs, uh, wastewater performance, things of that nature. So those were all listed out. And then the other half of the table is, is focused on, well, where do they kind of fall with, with regards to planning, which is the top row? So it's either no additional planning or the phase two report or a facilities plan or a CWMP. And so the colors represent those, uh, topics that could fall into one of those groupings. So if they're all shaded, like the dark blue, those all tended to be any one of the three. And then we got into whether or not it actually might involve a sewer extension. Um, meaning like a, uh, like you're dealing with a, a service area, might be a minor, uh, extension, like you just want to deal with South Main Street. Or a major extension where you might be dealing with the Route 3A corridor or things like that, that have, uh, regional implications. And so the Xs represent sort of where they fell into that category, where they, did they fall into potentially either a no extension or a minor extension or a major extension. And then the, the sort of, um, the odd group is the orange area, which really is, uh, categories of items that could be dealt with, regardless of you doing planning, whether you're not, you're going to establish, uh, additional sewer policy, how you want to deal with economic growth and tax-based questions. How do you want to deal with a community character? Um, and, um, those kinds of, those kinds of aspects. And then a question had come up in terms of what's the timing associated with any of those efforts? And the reality is phase two is something that, uh, is sort of on the forefront. Uh, time to complete really depend on what that scope is, which is one of those questions that's outstanding. If you did a facilities plan, you'd probably be doing your funding in May or a CWMP, you'd be getting your funding maybe in May. And then it'd be a year to two years to complete either one of those types of, of, um, planning efforts. So the next major decisions were, you know, how do you want to, you know, move forward? Do you develop a phase two plan to advance your regional planning efforts? Do you do a phase two report with a facilities plan that might give you a little more meat associated with decisions that the town of, um, Cohasset wants to focus on with regards to your facilities? Um, do you want to do a comprehensive plan, which could cover components that are addressed in the facilities plan in addition to things that are very much Cohasset focused? Um, and they can still have regional approaches in them. It's just, it depends on how it's going to actually pair with or partner with whatever Cohasset and, I mean, whatever Hall and Situit decide they want to do. And then there's always the, the, uh, idea of you moving forward with, um, a no extension alternative where you're not really making any major plan changes, but you're working within the confines of your existing infrastructure. So it's back to those same questions that we talked about at the beginning. And really, you know, the phase two scope is really, uh, the matter of Cohasset engaging with Hall and Situit and their consultant on, well, how much, how much say are you going to have in that scope and what is that scope of work? Is it already defined? Is it something that you can work with them on those kinds of things? Timing and cost for a CWMP, if you wanted to do a Cohasset only type of approach is really up to the town in terms of defining what the scope is of that work. And then seeking, you know, proposals or what have you for having that work done. If the whole connection changes or is no longer available, you're, you're obviously negotiate, you're obviously engaged with Hall. You know, do you have to then get re-engaged in active negotiations with them to, to find out what the next steps are? Um, in terms, sorry, excuse me, I didn't mean to jump forward. Um, in terms of, uh, addressing failed septic systems and the like, those are all issues that come before the sewer commission and are things to consider. But if they're part of another plan, it's just a question of whether they get addressed individually or as part of your planning efforts as you move forward. Regional solutions with, with Situit. Regional solutions with, with Situate, you know, to, the town needs to really start engaging uh, more formally with Situate with regards to is, is that, is that something that exists for you? Prioritizing your needs. Again, that comes through those planning efforts. And how will the town want to address things like land use planning and sewer expansion? Again, it really comes through in those major planning efforts. Those are the, those are the most comprehensive and sort of, um, compiled ways to deal with that as opposed to, uh, a more piecemeal approach.
Um, so yeah, thank you, Jeff. Um, I, I want to try to, uh, structure the, the conversation so that, because there's a lot of us with a lot of, I'm sure a lot of questions and a lot of opinions and then we'll, so if, if possible, um, I'm going to open it up to select board members first for questions. The sewer commissioners know way more about this than any of us. Um, if, if, you know, if they have an answer or Brian or Jeff want to answer, the select board members just, just flag, flag me down and I'll recognize you. Um, and then we'll go to the sewer commissioners to speak, um, after us, and then we can take some public comment. And I, my only comment or question at this point is, um, I wish we had done a CWMP 10 years ago because I think it would, it would be a little easier tonight, but, um, anyway, that's hindsight. Corey has his hand up, first out of the gate.
Just let's just not repeat, you know, past lessons, but, uh, just one clarification for you, Jeff. I noticed on the matrix here, which, um, I'm sure went across on public access TV very clear. You've got major extension and minor extension is, is kind of two different things. I mean, it, it seems to me, well, one, what did you mean by those two? And it kind of seems to me that considering we're already at sewer capacity, that really any extension of the sewer treatment plant would be major e- extension. Is that kind of true? Or is there something that I'm missing with the minor extension option here?
It's, it's really a, you know, part of this is, is sort of a, is an exer- exercise in nuance. So, um, in this case, that the way I kind of defined it is there are some things that the town knows that are, uh, immediately adjacent to your system could probably be brought in, uh, within your remaining capacity and help address things that are specific to Cohasset. Like, um, South Main Street, for example. So South Main Street, it would be considered something that might be a, a, a minor extension. If you're dealing with, if you were to run sewer on 3A and the implications of what that means to your system, what that means with your neighbors and how you manage that, that was considered more of a major extension. So that was kind of the, the, the difference between some of those, um, characteristic areas. So for example, on the matrix table with all three communities, the phase two priority areas is all of the, the five areas. So that's a, that would be considered a major extension because it certainly puts you over whatever you could manage right now. 3A kind of fell into that same category because there were some fairly large areas in there. And then if they had an impact on things, like if you did a major extension and it, like for say, the, the sewer, treatment plant, uh, permit, it has an X next to all of them because there are things that whether you have a minor or a major extension, it, it has an impact on the need of dealing with the permit. I know it's a little confusing, but it's, it, it was complex trying to boil down all these sort of different needs and these different characteristics and try to, you know, file them in, in columns for you.
Yeah, just a quick follow-up if I may, um, and that's, you know, I, I really appreciate the, you know, what you're trying to do and, and kind of get this into an understandable format. I think it's supremely useful. So, uh, like you just said, that the South Main Street would be a minor extension. At the same time, it looks like if we're like do South Main Street, we'll be over that 80%. So is it, is it really okay for us to operate with the assumption that it's okay for us to be in the 90 percentile range? Or I mean, how, how significant is that number really?
And, and certainly I'll let the sewer commissioners also, you know, offer their, their thoughts on this. But just because you reach 80% doesn't mean that the world ends. It just means that, that state or you're in your, and, uh, you know, in this case, the federal government who managing your permit want to make sure you have a plan for how you're managing your capacity. So if you said that, you know, we, we looked at our plant, everything that we have that's already currently sewored or could be sewored in the future will fit within what we have. And we have some capacity left over and South Main Street fits into that same envelope. And we decide that we want to do that and we're going to limit it right there and we stay under the capacity of the facility. You can do that, you just sort of, you're, you just have to document that that's what we're doing. That's our next step. That's how we're going to allocate that last bit of flow. The concern is, is what they, what the fed, the state doesn't really want you to do is get to 99% and be like, oh my goodness, now we got to build a whole new treatment plant because we don't, you know, we got all these, we got all this flow and we can't manage it all. They want to make sure that as you've reached 80%, does that mean that is, are you below what you had imagined back when you designed the facility 20 plus years ago? Or are you, you know, actually have more flow than you had anticipated? And therefore in order to address all the areas that you already have sewored, you're going to need to do something else. That's what that trigger is really set up for.
Select board comments or did the sewer commissioners that want to respond to anything? From Corey's question, Wayne? You're on mute.
There's several things that happened over time and, and one of the things that the state does is to, when you build a plant, they're going to give you a certain design flow. But they don't want to give you a design flow that's significantly higher than what that you'd ever use. For instance, and that's one of the problems with Hull right now is they potentially could have six million gallons a day. But if we don't go in and Situate doesn't go in, their permit will end up going lower and it might only be for two million gallons a day. Because there's no need for more than that and they'll reduce it. So, and I think w- when we look at what happens during a, a rainstorm and we have 800 or a thou- eight, 800,000 or 900,000 gallons going through our plant and everything runs okay. We've got some confidence that we can go over things, but of course we don't want to go over. So we're concerned with infiltration and, and why, why is additional flow going into the system? When it's, when it's raining, what's wrong? And so we're working on those issues to make sure that we're not treating water that really shouldn't be treated. And secondly, I guess the there are just, there are decisions, for instance, right now, I think that our flow is probably 50 or, or 75,000 gallons over what it should be based on what we've had, in the past, but we can't really be sure that because of COVID, more people are home, so more people are using more water. And that's, that's turning out to be true. And therefore our, our, our over, our, our, uh, flows today are probably significantly greater, probably 10, 15% higher than they would be if we didn't have COVID. It, you know, as a, as a contributor towards it. So there are, there are things that come up all the time that you end up using as the management of the, you know, of the whole plant and the, and the processes.
Great. Uh, Paul has his hand up.
Yeah. So looking at the, the capacity at this point, um, we're, we're pretty high in the capacity. So I think doing nothing is not an option because we're, we're going to have to, of all things, the, probably the biggest concern I have is the harbor. And, you know, what goes on in the harbor is, has to stay clean. And whether the state or the townspeople or the federal government will say this needs to be cleaned up, I, I think is one of the big hurdles we're going to have to get over. Looking at the, the numbers in the flow, we're, you know, I think Wayne is correct. If the stay at home office model stays, we're going to have a, a much higher flow in every single household in town. And you're going to lose a lot of capacity just on, on home offices, homework, home, home, stay at home people. And then you throw in some of the other things like the, the infilling, the emergency connections that are already there. We're, we're approaching a situation where we need to have an expansion. And the expansion will either be making more available in the town itself or exploring options elsewhere and routing it, which is the regionalization system. And that's how I look at it.
And, and we did, um, purposefully, um, take almost 50,000 gallons a day away from Hull that we were sending to Hull because of the rate structure there. And so if we had the capacity, we wanted to be able to treat it and have the savings. So, um, for the next couple of years, if we needed it, we could put more flow. But then if we couldn't come up with an agreement that's satisfactory, we'd have to then find a home for the flow.
Carrie?
I appreciate what Paul's saying and I appreciate your answer there, Wayne. Even in a pre-COVID world or a future world that isn't including kind of COVID numbers of use, I still also don't see keeping the status quo as being possible. It seems like even with our former rates before COVID hit, that we have to have some type of extension plan and that status quo is not an option. Also just more broadly, because I'm getting a couple texts from people watching who are a little confused by the matrix. I respect the complexity of it, but I think that we as a group need to do a better job, myself included, of being able to more simply explain the advantages and disadvantages for both of these options that's more easily digestible to the people of town. And I, I say that as myself included, I, I, this is a very complex issue. And I really respect that we're doing our due diligence on it, but I do think that it's confusing right now to a lot of our citizens in town.
And, and, and just to piggyback on that comment, I think hopefully when we come out tonight, we, we'll have some next steps and the next steps is going to be backfilling some of this with real information. Cause what's it going to cost? What, you know, is it even possible to make a deal with one town and not another? You know, what, what is the future of our IMA with Hull going to look like? You know, like we, we want to do planning, but at the same time, there are opportunity, opportunities that we want to take advantage of, but they don't make sense if they're either too expensive or don't accomplish, you know, some of the, the things that we really care about. I think the, the health of the harbor to me is, is a priority. I think South Main Street is a priority, um, and, and then what? So we have to find what the next step is to get answers so that we can actually explain it fairly simply and with some financial, um, and time costs attached to it. Jack has his hand up.
Yeah. When I look at this, the analysis says that, you know, step one is to, and a lot of this has already been, been done. And, and I think the sewer commission has done fantastic work and I'd like to thank them. And I also like to thank Mr. Beck, who's no longer on the sewer commission. But I think we should recognize the important work that he's done for the, for the town of Cohasset. So, uh, let's all remember that. But overall, I think we need to see what is the total, uh, sewer demand that we are going to need. And then we're going to try to find out how we can meet that. Now I'm a big believer that if we can do that within Cohasset, we're in much better shape. The minute we go across a border for a essential need, and this is an essential need, then the town puts itself, you know, basically, um, subservient to another political jurisdiction, which will have their own jurisdiction to as a priority, certainly not Cohasset. So I think we really think long and hard. So again, what is our capacity? To what extent can we need it, meet it as what our existing facilities are now? And whether our facilities can be expanded? And that's, I think, step one.
Um, unless the select board has any more comments, I'll turn it over to sewer commission for any follow-up kind of questions, comments, eye openers for us, Bill.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to give you my personal opinion, uh, maybe as both the resident and a sewer commissioner. The, uh, I think that the, um, cleaning of the Gulf and the cleaning of our harbor is paramount, in my opinion. And I think that, um, to do that, we have to have, uh, some sort of an agreement with, uh, Situate. And, and it would be, I think it would be to our benefit to start a conversation with them because there's been a, um, a delay in con- and, and talking to them. There's been a lot of innuendo that we don't want to talk to them, that the sewer board doesn't want to talk to them and all this sort of thing. And then that's not true. So we want to talk to them at, at, at the earliest, uh, we can. Second, there needs to be a conversation with Hull because, uh, to Jack's point, for us to be in the middle of an Oreo sandwich where we are dependent on one town or, or using the, the product of one town, but dependent on another, uh, it's not an, not a good situation for the town of Cohasset. We need to have a situation where we're on equal footing with, with Hull. They're processing our product. It costs them nothing more. So they're, whatever, whatever their cost is, it's not like there's a capital cost, there's nothing else. We're just sending this stuff to them. So we're sort of free money. And we need to have a discussion with them on that as to whether they want to do it or not. If they don't want to do it, then we have to look at other areas. Hingham has actually come to us as well. So, um, this is a, this is a far reaching, um, uh, concept that we have a lot of players in this. I think that we need to talk to them all. But if we're looking to do anything where we have reasonable expansion, where we have, uh, uh, reasonable, um, connections with our, our partner towns, um, we have to start the conversation now. We can't keep kicking the can down the road and saying, okay, well, wait a second. Well, we'll do it next week. No, we're going to talk to Situate now to let them know that we are interested in doing this. And so how can we work this out? They came up with a decision in one of the meetings I was, um, invited to that said, we'll pay for everything. Okay? Big, big, that's a big statement.
I, I, I just, just careful on the hearsay. I, I totally agree that I, I think, you know.
There were lots of people there and I'm sure it was taken in a me, you know, so.
Right, right.
I understand, I understand, yeah. And then we have to talk to Hull. We have to figure out what we can do. Cause right now there's, I think, I'm not, I don't know the exact numbers, but I believe there's a, um, six dollar per cubic foot difference between what we charge our, our rate payers and what they would charge us. So we need to figure out some accommodation on that.
Jack, is your hand newly up? Or is that from before?
No, that's from before.
Uh, Paul Kears?
So, uh, I'm the new guy. And at, at the risk of putting my Yeah, thanks. Yeah. So, uh, I, maybe you'll take the opportunity to, uh, to put my foot in my mouth here, but, um, you know, after absorbing, um, a lot over the weekend, um, and, and going through the, all the meeting minutes from the last couple of months. And then going through this presentation, it seems we really can't make a decision moving into a phase two until we clearly define, uh, what our own town priorities are, uh, the harbor being one of them and of course South Main. And, um, I, I do have, uh, a- as we all know, I do have a desire for the affordable housing piece, uh, which is, uh, section 1B on this plan. Uh, I know Mr. Vanderwell had, uh, submitted a, uh, report, uh, which is on the town website that states with, with South Main and fixing the harbor and the 1B, that we still maintain that 80% capacity. And to Bill's point, um, you know, it's, it's not an all or nothing situation for us at all. You know, we have the option of sending, um, say 5% capacity to Hull. And, and getting us back down to 75%. Um, so there's, there's ways to, um, uh, identify what we can do. Let's say within the next 24 months, um, that, that help us with the capacity issue. Putting what we, uh, as a town need to put in place for ourselves. Certainly engaging with, uh, Situate and Hingham and Hull are, are great. But, um, until we understand our full needs for Cohasset, it, it's kind of hard to engage these other towns with their wishlist. Not understanding what our, our full needs are, uh, for what we need for the town.
Just, uh, Paul, I, I knew somebody had their hand up. Wait, hang on. Wayne, did you have, did you want to respond to Paul's, Paul Kears' comment? Sorry.
Just three sort of comments that I had, just to sort of make sure everybody's, everybody's aware of what we're, what we're doing. Our interest in Situate is that half of the Gulf River is on Situate property. And so when you go on the border street,
And so when you go onto Border Street and you head on over to North Situate something, if we go ahead and we're sewer-ing South Main Street to protect the water supply on that side, it's really important for that other side to be sewed so that, in fact, we really have an end result of a much cleaner harbor. So we'll kept capture the water going in there. The other thing I want to mention is that we've done a lot over the last couple of years. Last year with the new membranes and then the SCADA system we're putting in, and we're we're really doing a lot to really make our plant ready for the next ten or twenty years. So that physically, it's a good and well-operated machine. So it's like putting a new engine, this and that and everything else in it. But we are, we are concentrating on that. So I just wanted to let you know that there are those couple of things.
Thank you. I'm gonna go to Paul Schubert and then Cory, and then I have a comment.
So I think the the town wishes for a couple of things. I think we've stated from the board's selection point of view that affordable housing is a key component that we would like to have in town, which I think everyone in town realizes is a reasonable approach. And one of the things is, you'll need to have certain areas that may need to be sewed. I think South Main is also a definite area that the town wants to sewer. And I think because of that, you will protect the harbor in that area, which the harbor is the other portion of the of the the puzzle that I think the town wants to protect. And that does involve, you know, conducting interaction with Situate, because a lot of what comes out of the harbor is coming from Situate. So I think those are three of the key things that the town, and I am willing to say that are part of our key components that we need to to do. And one of them will mean talking to to Situate. We already connected the hull, so that's a that's a fait accompli. So from a shifts, you know, flow over there or not, it's going to be a cost structure. But certainly, I think Situate is a key component for all three of the things that we want accomplished.
Cory?
Yeah, to to build off that, and I think, you know, what what we've all kind of said here, most of us at least have said it's, you know, just based on the chart and where we are, it doesn't seem like status quo or just is an option. We have to make this next step, as Bill said, not, you know, two years from now, but today almost, to say, you know, we need to go down the road more. And I think that's the point of this discussion is to say, okay, well, we're on agreement that we have to do something. So now we have to go, you know, figure out what that next thing is. And so, yeah, I mean, I think going forward, we have some information that we had from the regional study. I think we need to kind of synthesize that with, you know, our own information to say, you know, what really are our options here? You know, going alone is going to cost money. Good connection to Situate is going to cost money. Connect the hull is going to cost money. We have to, that's the conversation we have to move into.
Yeah, I I think that, you know, going alone is 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 just not a complete option. It might be an option at some point, but I think my my gut on this is, at some point, that planning area flows that that Jeff shared really does need to be prioritized. Affordable housing is a priority. There is going to be sewer. We, you know, the a sewer connection has been approved. Again, like the Hull discussion, it's it's more of a cost structure discussion than it is, you know, an if or a what at this point today. And and so, you know, one, one thing I would recommend is we talk to Situate first, because that is the primary partner that can address our primary concern, which is the harbor and the Gulf and and likely the the sewer-ing of South Main Street. We simultaneously talked to Hull to understand what possibilities exist there with respect to cost structure. And then we find out, we get the information, we need, we 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 understand instead of, I heard last year, you know, we have real numbers, we have real, like, yeah, we're we're willing to partner with you on this. Let's go get the engineering to figure out how much it's going to cost. Or, no, 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 this is the only way we can do it. So, you know, we meet again, and I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought. I'm talking in circles. I get it. I think we need to talk to Situate. I think we need to talk to Hull. I think we need to recognize that Gulf River sewer-ing South Main Street is probably our number one priority, knowing that we also have to deal with the the inflow that's going to come in from the affordable housing units up on three A. And and, you know, if we can do that in thirty days, then we have a decision about whether we're going to go to phase two with two other partners or whether there's some other study that needs to go forward. And I would also recommend that, like, there's this immediate piece, and then there's the next piece, which is, we really do need to do either some kind of long or long-term comprehensive wastewater management plant or some some kind of overlay on that for everything else that's going to come along the way in the next five to ten years. And that would include facilities planning as well. Any feedback on that? Carrie has her hand up.
Just to echo what you're saying, Diane, I feel like we do have to be really careful of being, for lack of a better word, isolationists here and blocking ourselves off from deals with Situate and Hull. Because, you know, we need to be having the discussions about what's better. But Situate and Hull are dying to talk to us. They keep asking to talk to us. They want to get a deal together that is best for all of us. And I just don't see us being able to to do what's best for Cohasset at this point without also working with at least Situate, maybe Hull. I feel like our land is too interconnected. I just, Situate's not the enemy here. They really want to come to a solution that is best for our community as a whole, our South Shore community. So I think we have to be careful. I think there's some rumors out there that Situate just wants to help themselves, and they actually really want to get a deal going that's going to help all of us and that will help our town too. So we have to, we have to start treating this like the community issue that it is.
Right, I think it's 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 just getting beyond the rumors and and it it each of our opinions and just kind of getting getting a conversation. Bill, did you want to say something and then Cory?
I I just wanted to affirm what you and Carrie just said, that there are tons of rumors out there. And I think that, you know, the rumor that there is going to be a three A pipe going from Situate to Hull is like, you know, like a, you know.
Not happening.
Like, yeah, we're gonna do it, and we're gonna just cut you guys off. And I think that it's it's to our benefit collectively as a town to start conversations as soon as we possibly can, particularly with Situate first, and then however we can with Hull.
Yep, I I agree with that. Bill, Cory, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, if I could suggest, I mean, I'd love to hear, you know, maybe in the next, I don't know, couple of weeks, if it's even possible just to have a Cohasset situation. I think this is something we've brought up before. I'm kind of having memories of different conversations, and there were challenges with that. So I think, you know, going forward, I'd like to just see, hey, you know, if we were to do it with Situate, is that even possible? I know Situate's, you know, pretty much that capacity. I know there's a lot of stuff, but I think I could use a refresher on just whether that's even a realistic possibility and what that would look like. So just to kind of cut off, you know, the one, one section at a time and focus on that first.
Could I suggest that that the board, of the select board, kind of tasked Chris to work with whatever relevant parties, and it might be Brian and a member of the sewer sewer commission, or it might be, you know, whatever, to actually have a conversation with Situate, have a conversation with Hull, drill down on that information, and like, literally in twenty-one days or thirty days, come back to this same collection of people and just say, here's what's possible with Situate. Here's what's possible with Hull. Here's what's possible with both of them. And then we say, go forth on this idea or whatever. We're go forth, we're coming up with another one. Come back to us basically with a recommendation on on next steps. Chris, does that sound right? See your hand, Jack and Paul. I'll get to you in a sec.
Collectively say sounds right.
Thank you. Good answer. Jack?
You know, I I again caution that different towns, they are responding to their needs, not our needs. We need to be very careful. And I think we got kind of a little wake-up call, this whole deal about oyster farming, which had no real great benefit for Situate, but had a great negative impact on Cohasset. So I think we should be aware of that. That's a very, unfortunately, a painful learning thing. So although it may be to Cohasset's benefit to connect with the other two, but we need to be very careful that that's done in a manner in which we retain our sovereignty and we retain a. Right now, we are actually in a very good, strong position, because those towns need us now more than we need them. Doesn't mean we lord it over them. Doesn't mean we don't handle ourselves appropriately. But let's remember, we have a very good position, and we should make sure that we maintain that position. And of course, one of the strongest ways to maintain the position is always having the option of going alone if we have to.
Just just to asterix that comment, I I agree in general that whatever we do, our responsibility is to the to the in the best interest of the residents of Cohasset. So that is paramount. The other piece and to the to the to the priority that I think we're all on the same page with, which is the the health of the harbor. And as Bill noted earlier, we can't go it alone and address the harbor without some kind of sewer partnership with Situate, or at least making sure that we're simpatico in terms of that being an important requirement of whatever comes next.
Very strong supporter of the harbor.
I was just gonna say, I like Diane, that path forward, just, you know, three weeks or whatever it is. If Chris could task and just, you know, reliable information, you know, as quickly as possible. And then, you know, the comment of like the Cohasset perspective, you know, I think it's, you know, just, I'm very sensitive to that, obviously. But I also don't want us to get preoccupied with making sure that another, we're not benefiting another town. You know, the Cohasset perspective is, you really, what's best for us? And and that that's kind of independent of what's best for another town. So just, you know, while we're thinking about this, you know, it may be possible that we help Hull or we help Situate. But I'm not really concerned about that. I don't think we should be either. I think we should just be concerned with whether this benefits our town. If it benefits them too, that's great. But that shouldn't come into kind of how we talk about it.
So Paul, sorry, Paul Kears?
Yeah, so I, you know, one of the, one of the things that, one of the small things, which is very, very important is, you know, while we're, you know, planning all of this, you know, we we have to put in a certain contingency plan for excess. And we also consideration the other week, yeah, maybe I'm back. Yeah, I just think we we need to kind of input some contingency plan for the excess flow for the town. That's not in this PowerPoint. Also, put in some sort of plan for a COVID-like anomaly, which we've had this year. And and maybe we we have that as a separate piece of rare contingency. But, you know, one thing I I would like to say that the sewer commission has been asked to really go out and and spread its wings and talk to all of our butters, Situate, Hull and Hingham, and really engage them into what their thoughts are, along with our needs. I think what we really need to do too is we need to also be open-minded that the phase two that's in this PowerPoint may have to change. You know, maybe the phase two is a bigger portion of of the Cohasset needs rather than all three towns equally put into that pie. So I I'd like to see GHD on a presentation take into consideration somewhat of a diluted aspect of phase two, which takes into consideration a separate plan with with Hull to focus on the harbor and South Main and how that impacts some of the flow. And then from there, maybe take a look at a phase three where we engage Hull into additional capacity.
So I just want to make sure we don't go too far into options, because we really, I want to make sure we're all somewhat on the same page about, most importantly, the next steps, which, you know, I I think without talking to Situate and Hull, we don't know what a phase two plan that they're planning, they have been waiting for us to come on board with, might even look like. And that's part of the problem is, what is what is phase two? We may, we may find out from them that they're not interested in in this way or that way or some way that we think is important to go. And in which case, then we're going to have to have, make another decision. We're going to have to make another decision about doing a CWMP on our own or or coming up with a small project. I mean, and if whatever we do, we may have to make some decisions within the next forty-five days if if it's going to require any kind of funding for town meeting. Because, you know, expansion of the sewer district is in our purview and not necessarily the sewer commissions as as much as they are the content experts. So I think if if, you know, if I've heard everybody write, and I can summarize, the position is, is that we want to do what's in the best interest of Cohasset. We all agree that the the health of the harbor is paramount. We all agree that affordable housing, which is already, you know, that that number in a way should be moved up because there there is a, you know, that that project has been approved for a sewer connection. So again, the devil's in the details, like with everything else. And so what's left and what can we do and and what would we have to do going forward? But I don't think we're going to know anything till we have those conversations with Hull and Situate. And I think they have to happen, you know, six months ago, but ASAP. Wayne?
Is the project that you're talking about just the affordable housing building, or is it the entire complex?
You tell me, actually. I don't know. I mean, you know, in terms of what they have permission to sewer.
We don't have it. There's no permission. As far as I know, we get, we've given them an application to sign, and they haven't signed. No, but it would just be, it would be interesting, because it would seem to me that it would be that building that we're sewer-ing, not necessarily the, another building that has a functioning system or another building that needs a separate repair. It would be just good for us to know, you know, what the case is.
Well, I don't have an answer to that question. My understanding was that they were, that the the new area that has the twenty units of affordable housing was granted permission to hook up to some potential sewer. It was just a matter of cost.
Now, Chris, is that your understanding?
Correct me if I'm wrong.
We sent them, and we sent them a, basically a proposal that we have never gotten a response to. Anyway.
But but in the planning, the expectation is that they would hook up to sewer.
In their mind.
For those units.
In their mind, yes.
So. Paul?
Yeah, so I I think if we can, you know, ask Chris to speak with Situate, speak with Hull, see what the options are, see what is in the best interest of the town, and see what what the connection options are. I think that's the next step.
Would the board, with the select board, agree that that what our sort of general priorities are in terms of relative to sewer is is affordable housing, harbor health, not necessarily in that order, and then obviously, whatever infrastructure can handle those priorities?
Yeah.
And Diane, I also feel like we're in agreement that the status quo is not an option, that something has to happen in terms of future planning with this.
Agreed. And that it's very difficult to make decisions without any kind of financial projections. So there thus the conversation so that we can move into the next phase of understanding what any of these projects might look like. Okay, Jack?
Yeah, I would suggest that we we have a consensus. This whole conversation is consensus. I don't think we need to necessarily formalize it. What we do need for Chris to do is to listen to to what they might propose and see where where they're coming from. I don't think we want to empower him to negotiate. I think we want to empower him to listen and then bring back what things to the select board and to the sewer commission. And remember, the sewer commission is an independent entity. It is underneath the town, but they. It is underneath the town, but they are, have some degree of independence and can do what they, they wish. But at this point, let's just hear what they have to say and then we can evaluate it.
And, and I would.
Situate and Hall.
I would recommend to Chris that, you know, you take maybe the chair of the sewer commissioner with the conversation so that, so that we're, you know, we've got both bodies represented.
Great idea.
If, if I can just clarify, oh, I'm sorry, Paul was.
Just, just to, because I'm new at this, I'm, I just want to understand the responsibility of the action item to talk to Situate, is that better geared towards a sewer commissioner? Or is it better geared towards the town manager, the town manager or town manager to their sewer commission? I'm just trying to understand.
Well, it's, it's, it's tricky and I, I would defer to Chris just in terms of the right sort of structure for that negotiating team because the sewer commissioners in, in Situate is the Board of Selectment, the select board. And, and here it's different, but the select board in this town is, is more, has more oversight on the expansion of sewer district while the sewer commissioners are, you know, I call them the content experts on what exists, what works, what doesn't, what the, you know, experience is. That's why I suggested that it be Chris on behalf of the select board and, and, and Chair of the Sewer Commission. Corey, you raised your hand.
Basically, just echoing what you were saying, which is, you know, Situate sewer commissioners are the select board. So I was just wondering if a select board member should go there as well, since if we do something, it's gonna flow through this board, you know, it's a town meeting and that kind of stuff. So, but if you think town manager is sufficient for that, but I also wouldn't see, you know, any, any harm in, you know, a select board member also attending.
You'd be good at it, Corey.
That was not a volunteer. That was not that.
So we could, we can select a select board member offline. I think the chair has the responsibility to do that or the ability to do that and I will call one of you up. It won't be me. Chris, is that good? I know we're running, we're running over time. I want to make sure everybody feels comfortable with our consensus, with our next steps. I, you know, I, I wish we could be at a decision-making point. We're not. But thanks, Jeff and, and Brian for bringing us this synthesis, which is still a lot to synthesize. And hopefully, within the next three to four weeks, we can actually have it further.
You're muted.
Diane, you got muted.
That happened. I just like, I play around on my mouse pad. I also noticed that Lisa McGonigal, who works for the sewer commission, said that there wasn't an application. So I stand corrected at the CJC location. So, but you know, I do think we have to recognize that those affordable housing units are, are very important to the town and we need to make sure we also have those conversations, making that talk, that discussion go forward. But that's something that should be done, not here.
So just to clarify, so I'm just getting this straight. So the charge is for me to get an appropriate group of folks together to have a conversation with Situate to talk about what we can talk about. Where, where there are points of potential conversation to circle back with all of you to say, he, here's where we might be able to talk. Same thing with Hall and collaboration, collaboration with both of them to say, here are the points that are, you know, Cohasset has some particular things. Is there a path on which any or all of us can work collaboratively down the road? I mean, so and then to circle back with you and say, yeah, here, here are the challenges, here are the options and then you give some further direction.
Here's what we can do for phase two or here's what we need to start talking about now. Yes. Great, everybody?
We'll, we'll circle back after this, Diane. We'll talk more.
Right. Thank you all. I know this is complex and there's a lot of things to consider with every decision on this. So moving right along to a much simpler topic. Town hall. But it's exciting. We have, this is, this is a project that has gotten to many decision-making points and it is exciting. And we have the Town Hall Building Committee here tonight to walk us through where they're at and talk again about some next steps for that project. And Wayne's on the building committee, so he gets to stay.
Johnson Roberts, the architect, Michelle.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, Corey?
Just, we didn't, I don't recall the sewer commission calling the meeting. Do we have to do that part like we did last time? Does Town Hall Committee have to do a roll call to open their meeting? Okay.
Yep. Bill, so you just need to do a roll call so that you're, we have your committee's presence noted.
Okay, is it easier for me to call them out one at a time as opposed to everybody answer at the same time? Mark, speak up.
Hello, Mark Cameron.
Wayne?
Wayne, slide check.
Carolyn?
Carolyn Coffey.
Josiah?
Hi, Josiah.
Sam?
No, I just got let in.
We hear you.
All right, great. Sam is here.
Is there anybody else here that used to come up? Is, is Steve Kirby part of your team? Yes, okay.
And Tucker.
Sorry, hey Tucker, sorry.
Tucker, here.
Awesome.
Is Laura Soderberg part of the team? Is Carrie Bobbyak part of the team? Yes.
And do you have Phil O'Brien?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Phil O'Brien is on.
Okay, Phil, I'll turn it over to you and or whoever's gonna walk us through what you have.
Sure, we'll get started.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for having us again. We're gonna do a PowerPoint presentation for you. We're gonna show you where we are now. You're gonna hear clearly where the Town Hall Building Committee stands. We're gonna be looking for some direction from the select board. And we're gonna have our project manager gonna be doing the presentation of the PowerPoint. That's John Lemire. We also have representative from the design team here. Stuart is with us and then let's see, Phil O'Brien is also here from, from the project management group. So we're gonna, the first slide we're gonna show you, if you can see it, is gonna show you where we were last time, which was the design, the outside and the inside pictures of what we went through when we met with you last time. And this is just a visual reference so that you can kind of connect to where we're, we're headed here. But we really like, really like the simplicity of the design. It's very complimentary to the, the old structure. The side entrance makes so much more sense when you think about the parking space and where people pull in and want to walk and, and access the building. And we've eliminated the second entrance. So there's just a single entrance. We'll get more green space in front of the town hall, which is gonna complement the addition in the old town hall as well. So Tucker is gonna start out with the first slide. He's gonna go through some of our goals that we've achieved. And then John is gonna take over the rest of the PowerPoint from there.
All right, hello. Okay, so this is way back before the pandemic. We all voted and went through some of the things we wanted to make sure we were getting out of this building to respond to the points that you guys, being the Board of Select, gave us. So this is what we just thought was very important to have. So the first thing we have is that we've wanted to design this building really so that it can be relevant many, many years going forward so that we build it right this time, so we don't have to have this committee again in my lifetime. We just can have this on the common and enjoy it and it continues to be relevant while equally as importantly representing the heritage of the town going backwards. So the first thing we had is obviously the building, we wanted to use the space and used to be efficient and used to be functional and flexible. The floor plan needs to allow for things that, to be able to change as the town changes, for departments to grow and shrink as departments grow and shrink and change as the time goes forward. Phil, I have a question. Am I supposed to, do you want me to talk in comparison to the design or just kind of the things we've done? Sorry.
You're doing a great job. You don't have to talk to the design, but yeah, any of the highlights are great. Thank you.
Great, just the highlights, just making sure. Okay, so that was the first thing that we really took into account. We all voted on that. And I think you guys are hopefully gonna really like what we have. The next thing we wanted is we wanted to make sure that all the residents and anyone who's coming to use the town hall can have access to it. So we wanted to make sure the building was fully accessible to everyone, meaning that everyone can go through the same entrance. Everyone can access all of the departments, which is both for people of different body types, but also making sure that the people who are public facing are closer to the public so that you can easily get in and speak with them and, and get out rather than having to go down any form of odd hallway or, you know, go up the stairs, then it'll go up this other side stairwell, take a left. So we tried to eliminate all of that, making it easy, easy to use for everyone. The next one is we wanted to make sure that we had enough space for all of the programming in town halls and making sure that it could be usable during the day when the employees of the town hall are there, giving them the space they need to do their job, the offices they need, meeting rooms to collaborate, stuff like that. But also would be good for the night as well when different committees meet or whatever ends up getting done there when you guys meet. So making sure that the space has as many uses as possible, but that is a place for, for all of us to meet when needed. And last, but certainly not least important is we wanted to make sure that it fit. I know that a lot of people have felt over the years that the addition to the building doesn't quite go in with every other building that stands on the common. It doesn't look quite right. So we spent a lot of time making sure that this building not only complements the existing structure, the existing building, both in look and function, but also complements the common and the historic downtown in general, so that it's really an asset of the, of the community and a little bit of a wow factor when we drive through.
Thank you, Tucker. We have quite a few people here for resources. When we get done with the presentation, you're welcome to ask any questions and we go forward. John?
Okay, thank you, Tucker, and thank you, thank you, Phil. Okay, so now we'll talk a little bit about the, you know, the how much. So when we talk about project budget, we talk about the total project budget and that's a combination of the hard costs, which are the construction costs, labor, equipment, materials used to construct the building. Soft costs, which are your architect and engineer fees, your owner's project manager, your furniture fixtures and equipment. Basically, anything that when you picked up the building and shook it, what would fall out of it? That's, those are the things that would be considered as part of soft costs as well. And then on top of that contingencies, you know, that was monies we put in place for just in case. We hope you don't have to spend it all, but you will spend some of it. It's construction. We always spend some of the contingency. So at the end of the day, this is the project budget as it stands right now. There was a three, basically three options that were looked at, a base option plus option one and option two. And when we talk about the base or the options, we're talking about the HVAC systems in the building, okay? Everything else for construction is the same. The base system was kind of a baseline HVAC AC system with, with a VAV system. But the other two options, the first is a VRF system, a variable refrigerate flow system. And the second option was geothermal. So as you can see, the difference between option one and option two, you know, the hard costs for construction are either nine point eight million or ten point four. On top of those, we add in our soft costs. Our soft costs again, we keep, we kept it to the high level, you know, of detail here. Your architect and engineering fees, your OPM fees, FFNE furniture fixture equipment, IT, all of your computers, AV audio visual, security and CX. CX is commissioning. And then we have our advertising, bidding and legal costs. And then kind of one of the bigger ones, temporary facilities and moving, and we'll talk about that in a few minutes. But where, where are the town hall residents going to go while the new building and the rehab are taking place? And then on top of those things, we carry contingencies. So we have the construction contingency right here. This construction contingency is basically just ten percent of the hard cost number carried above. And then soft cost contingency, which is five percent of the soft cost number. Adding together the hard costs, the soft costs and the contingencies, you have a total project budget between thirteen point five and fourteen point two million. And we'll now, we'll talk a little bit about of some of the high points of that. So probably the biggest one is this isn't a ten million dollar project. You know, at the end of the day, I know there was a lot of discussion about ten million being a number, ten million being a target. But at the end of the day, after the committee and the project team went through and did a really thoughtful program for the building, programming of the spaces that were there, the spaces that weren't, that needed to be there, that program trans- translated into a square footage that drove a higher, you know, drove, drove the project cost to what you saw on the prior slide. And just also understand that the construction cost is from a schematic design estimate. That's high level for, as far as construction estimates go. Moving forward, there would be two subsequent estimates, one at design development and another one at construction documents as kind of litmus tests along the way to let everybody know that we're tracking well. Also, the program includes space for one four three TV in the existing program. That's another space that really hadn't been programmed into the building before, but we knew we needed to get in there based upon their charter with the town. Additionally, you know, the design is really no frills. You know, this is not a Taj Mahal. I mean, that's, that's what you always, you will always hear from somebody. You're designing a Taj Mahal. No, we're designing a building that's gonna last for fifty or sixty years to begin with. If you build it like garbage, it will last like garbage. So, you know, this is a solid design that will be lasting. Also, as we talked about, you know, option two was for geothermal. And, you know, we are just scratching the surface of design and project budgeting here. You know, geothermal is still being reviewed. You know, there's some back and forth about what type of geothermal system, what's the return on investment? Bottom line is, you know, it is, does cost more to put a geothermal system in because you gotta drill a bunch of wells into the ground. And, you know, those wells, at the end of the day, there's your payback. Your payback is the fact that, you know, you're heating the building with fifty-something degree water that's being pumped out of the ground. You know, and that helps you heat and cool the building. Again, more to be done as far as investigating that, but we do have a starting place. We do have a starting budget to be, that was reflected on the total project budget. Also, we still have some unknowns, you know, and one of the big ones is temporary facilities. You know, the number that you saw in there, which is about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, contemplates about a twelve-month construction duration and a month, additional month on either side, a month to get it up and mobilized and running and a month to take it down at the end. At this point, we're planning on not having to lease or purchase any space to place it, but we will have to rent, you know, trailers to, you know, to actually house any of the operations. Hopefully, it can be on a town-owned space, no cost, a town-owned piece of land. That would be the plan. But we're still, we would still need to figure out what utilities are needed, what kind of accessibility requirements does the building have? Because let's face it, it's gonna be functioning as a town hall. What kind of requirements for fire alarm and fire protection? What kind of requirements for COVID protocols and barriers as well as security and access? So, you know, things to be determined. Additionally, you know, again, we're still not quite sure of the scope of certain parts of the project or timing, and we'll talk about that in a few minutes. You know, the estimates contemplated are around a twelve-month duration. If the project duration becomes fourteen or fifteen months because of complexity or scheduling with the winter months into the construction season, you know, you may not cost you, may cost you a little bit more for construction, may cost you a little bit more for soft costs. And I'll show you that graphically in a couple of minutes. Also too, one of the things to touch on, a couple of things that really impact public work versus private projects are, you know, labor and escalation. As far as labor goes, you know, being a public project in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you know, we have to go by the labor rates that are set by the Massachusetts Department of Labor. we have to go by the labor rates that are set by the Massachusetts Department of Labor Standards, the prevailing wage rates. We are currently working as OPM for the town of Situate, right down the road on their new Situate Senior Center. These are the prevailing wage rates, base rates for that project. So just so that you get an idea of what the kind of rates, you know, the town of Cohasset would be paying for the town hall. Again, these are rates that don't include any burden, overhead and profit or insurance and bond costs. So if you take an average wage rate in Situate of say $80 an hour, and we add that 30% labor burden, we add the overhead and profit, we add the insurance and bond, the total average hourly wage in Situate right now is $117 an hour for labor. So obviously, this is one of the things that makes public projects cost more. The other thing that we deal with, and again, this we deal with this both on the public and private side of of the the house is escalation. Every year, you can be guaranteed that labor costs will go up. Those prevailing wages go up every year on a set schedule. Material costs do fluctuate, but what also causes costs to fluctuate is how competitive the market is. Escalation typically averages about 3% a year, but before COVID hit, we were in probably one of the hottest construction markets we'd seen in a decade. And I would tell you that geographically, we saw escalation from 5 to 7% in some areas, a little higher in some, a little lower in others. But just to give you an idea of, you know, what would escalation do to the town of Cohasset's project using that 14.2 number here? You know, even at a 3% escalation, what happens if we don't do the job now? Well, if we wait a couple of years, it's going to cost you $900,000. If we wait a couple of years and escalation, we come into a really hot market, price could jump a million and a half in two years. And this is just, this is not a scare tactic. This is the rehars reality of the construction, construction business. If we were to build right now, we're actually below 3% right now. We've had a couple of bids recently that have been super competitive, and that's because, you know, everything is kind of muffled right now, you know, and COVID has kind of, you know, people aren't really spending money. So the work that's out there, people are going after it and are very hungry. You know, obviously, we all hope that we're coming out of COVID, you know, and that's not good for construction. But it's, you know, it's good, good for the economy overall. So it is ultimately a win win. But again, we wanted to just make sure that we, you know, threw a slide in there about escalation to understand that it is a major, a major piece of of pricing. So now we're going to get into kind of what the committee has looked at and is suggesting as far as their recommendation. So, you know, basically, the Town Hall Building Committee hired the project team essentially through schematic design. We are wrapping up, you know, schematic design is essentially done. You saw the fruits of that in the last presentation. You saw the fruits of that in the first slide tonight, you know, kind of a reminder of what you saw last time. And now it's time to figure out what to do next. And we're going to close in a couple of slides with kind of a list of options for you. But this is, this is essentially the committee's recommendation. You know, we're basically looking at this upcoming spring town meeting in May to seek funds for the entirety of the design. After kind of thinking about it and bouncing it back and forth, you know, the committee feels, you know, with the project team, that the best decision for the town is to say, let's get, let's, let's try to secure monies at the upcoming spring town meeting for to complete the design development, construction documents and bidding of the project. And again, you see here an option A or an option B, but in either of those options, it's we're talking about the same decision to to proceed with asking for those funds in the spring. What isn't determined yet is when do we ask for the construction monies? And we wanted, you know, we'll just talk to you about kind of the our two schools of thought. But again, this doesn't have to be decided today. In option A, what we would do is we would continue with that design development kind of through the spring, through the summer. We'd get to the fall and we would have finished the design development. And we would have in our hands a a new refreshed design development estimate. And we could come to the town in the fall at the special town meeting and the fall ballot and say, here, here's what we're thinking the construction costs are, and we come to the town for the remainder of those construction dollars. After that, what would be hopefully a successful town ballot, meeting and town ballot is we would work through the rest of the fall and the winter of 21 into the spring of 22, because the reality is, is if we only get the construction, you know, if we only have until fall, it's impossible for us to have the design ready to bid by the fall. So we have to work through the winter and then put the project out to bid in the spring of 2022. Option B would be still come to you in the spring, you know, for for those, you know, the remainder of the design dollars all the way through bidding. But then we wouldn't come to you for construction dollars. We go through, we'd work the whole year, we'd get into the winter of 2021, 22, and we would bid the project in the in roughly March or April of 2022 and come to you again at the next year's annual town meeting with construction bids in hand. So as you can see, same decision for either option here in the spring of 2021. This is the remainder of the design monies. The question just becomes, when is it best for the ask for construction? It's either this fall with a estimate or next spring with bids in hand. Okay, so just a couple more things. You know, obviously, we understand the need for a marketing plan for this project. We know what happened last time. We understand that, you know, we need, there needs to be a concerted effort this time, you know, using the town website, you know, get rid of those old files, archive them. But again, that's the old project populated with the new files. Again, a lot of, and invite a lot of public comment. You know, a big use of Facebook and Instagram to illustrate what's happened on the project so far, why we need to do town hall? Why just fixing the old one won't work, you know, what kind of led the committee to the, you know, to the the results that you saw last meeting? Also know that we need to have a marketing subcommittee. This is something that isn't something that's just handled at our at our periodic building committee meetings. This needs to be, you know, have a subcommittee and work on its own. Bottom line is, is we need time to educate the residents, you know, the various town departments, boards and committees of what the project is, why we need it, and most importantly, what it's going to cost to the individual taxpayer, you know, and be able to communicate that effectively. And how that works with, you know, the sewer project we just heard about or anything else that, you know, I saw your face or any or any other projects that are out there, you know, and all it it's never just the one thing. There's always lots of other things that are out there for a town to consider. So, you know, at the end of the day, you know, we're, you know, the recommend, you know, we told you what our, you know, the committee's recommendation is. But kind of what are the options out here, you know? You could put the project on hold right now because you say 14.2, no way, never going to fly. But as we showed you with escalation, next year it's going to be 15, the year after it's going to be 16. We don't like this, number one, but you know, it is an option for for you as the select board. You know, we could redesign for a lower price, redesign the existing building. But again, that then won't satisfy the program that we went through. So if you're going to be just completely cost focused, you're not going to get the needs satisfied that you have. One of the other options we talked about, again, this is could be a recommendation if you, you know, but again, this is, you know, more a question of if we went just for design development dollars at this town meeting, we would have to come back to the fall town meeting to ask for the remainder of the design and then for the construction. So we didn't like this number three, because number three is essentially three asks instead of two. We have number four here. Again, this is the one we talked about, our option A and option B, proceed with design development through bidding. It's about a $700,000 number to do that, to have full design costs setting us up for a special town meeting at some point in the future, either with an estimate or with the final construction document or construction bids. And the other option that we talked thought about for a short time was, you know, do you just ask for all of it right now? And while maybe there's a reason to do that, wouldn't the committee didn't feel that it was enough time to educate? And we don't have enough of the answers yet. So we certainly have enough time to educate people of why we want to keep the design going. But to to be educate and feel confident on a number ourselves, there wasn't enough time to do enough design to get another estimate. So it just seemed too rushed. So I think the committee, the committee did vote in its committee meeting earlier tonight to move ahead with a suggestion to the select board to proceed with design development through bidding and approach annual town, annual town meeting for $700,000 in design fees. So with that, I will turn it over to all of you.
I I just have a quick question. So in the decision on when to go to town meeting with the full for the full construction costs, which you mentioned could be at special town meeting in November or next spring, yeah, that we don't have to make that decision anytime soon. The point is to get us to a point where we have as much information to give the people in town to make the right decisions.
Correct. And frankly, with the design monies in hand, you know, we have the ability to kind of take the pulse of people kind of through the spring, through the summer and kind of see where people are leading, see what, you know, the climate is like. I mean, you know, you know, I would always feel personally, you know, I always like having bids in hand. The problem with bids in hand here in this option is absent, you know, let's say we talked, you know, we talked a little bit about bidding the project and, you know, we'll hang on a minute. If you bid the project and wait until spring town meeting in May, the reality is with with a ballot boat, if there's a, you know, if it's, if if there needs to be a ballot for borrowing, the job isn't really starting till June, you know, so up here in the fall, we ask for all the funds, we're bidding this and starting in March. That three months down in this option basically will will mean that the new part of the building will be being built in the winter, which means you're going to have to deal with winter conditions and it's going to cost more. So that's kind of the, that's the downside of option B, but the upside is that you have bids in hand. So, you know, that's a decision that there'll be a lot of back and forth, you know, absent the town deciding, yeah, let's have it's its own special town meeting sometime in, you know, February of of 2022. I don't know if the town would want to do that with another town meeting coming, you know, you know, usually annual coming in May. But again, that's why we don't, that's a year from now, you know, we need to keep the design moving, keep the momentum going. That's kind of, so the focus is is definitely over here on this side of the graph right now. And we'll get to that decision, you know, obviously with with, you know, input from 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 all of you, you know, as we get closer.
Great. Any questions now? Or should we turn it over to whoever's next to talk about more design?
That's pretty much our presentation. We want to leave this open at the end for questions.
Okay. Could you go back on the PowerPoint just to the the schematics? Great, thanks. Corey has his hand up.
Yeah, if we're you know, a couple of things strike me, you know, the first one is that, you know, I know that we've gone through this this process a bunch of times. And it kind of seems like, you know, we kind of keep ending up around the same dollar figure, you know, I I personally, you know, I've been looked at a lot of stuff. I do think this is a necessary project for for us to undertake. And, you know, I think the the slide that said this is not a $10 million project kind of hit me pretty hard. The other thing that I just, I kind of want to, this is something that I thought of today, and I do want to talk to the town building committee here. I mean, specifically, you know, a lot of the committee members I know personally and from watching your meetings, both on recording and then live. You know, I just, I think you guys, I don't think the town could have asked for a better work product than what you guys put together. There's been a lot of, you know, a lot of pencil sharpening, a lot of hard decisions. And, you know, I I did look at previous plans, not to say the previous plans weren't, you know, good in their own right, but what you guys have made stands out as just, I don't think we can get better than this. And, you know, I've got questions, but at the same time, I kind of am trying to remind myself that, you know, a lot of you, I'm very, you know, I have full confidence in your board. And, you know, I'm, I don't want to relitigate or question every decision because I trust that you guys have gone through this. I've watched you operate. And, you know, there hasn't been a stone left unturned. So, you know, thank you for all that you've done, especially because it's been about a year. It's been a lot of, a lot of work, and I know you guys had to reboot one time or in the middle of this. But I think the final product is something to be proud of, and, you know, I am certainly available to all of you to help get messaging out or education or whatever, because I think what you've done to the town is really a great service here. So, so thank you.
Thanks, Corey. Paul?
So I know the geothermal was was looked at. Is there a price tag for that?
Yeah, Paul, right, right now. So right now, if you look at geothermal, it's about $600,000 more than the HVAC system that would be recommended. So that's the upcharge. There was a couple of, there was some input to the committee by a few other folks as far as that that geothermal cost. Obviously, you know, there's some thoughts that maybe that the geothermal cost showing here is is a little conservative, but at the end of the day, you're really at 30,000 feet. And we haven't really, you know, this building is being theoretically designed, you know, with a with a load without all the design being done yet. With an, you know, with a with a ballpark as far as the number of wells based upon the history of this designer. And of course, the designer is going to be conservative when they put their number together. So, you know, it very well may be that, you know, it might not be a $600,000 upcharge. It might be four, but bottom line is, is at SD, I'm not, I'm going to tell you it's six. You know, it's more money because it's it's because of the wells. It's always more money. We're doing it on two other projects right now. And it's always more than the than the we'll call the baseline systems or the, you know, the other more traditional systems. But again, until we get further down the road, and again, that that's part of the reason why we didn't want to rush right to a town meeting with a with a whole number, because there's things that need to be vetted still, you know, there's, you know, ultimately, you know, these projects could come in with bids, you know, half a million dollars under or more, you know, and but we don't, we don't know that. There's a lot of work to be done until we can get there.
Mark Cameron had his
And in
I'm sorry.
And is there also a solar option for supply and battery reserve for for fueling the buildings?
For what and battery reserves?
So is there a solar option that could be used in addition to battery storage for electrical reserve?
So at this point, and I'll, I know Phil, Phil is on from Johnson Roberts. I don't believe we have really explored too much into the solar aspect of this. Because obviously, until we get buy off on, you know, kind of everyone being happy with schematic, you know, we're not going to put solar on the roof. And frankly, parking wise, there's not a heck of a lot of room, you know, on the property for for solar, you know, and I, you know, whether that be canopy or something else. So really, I don't believe solar had real has really been entertained as a
Can I just jump in for a second? The, I know one of the recent AEC meetings, you know, they are, they've scoped out, I think it's, you know, 300% our municipal load for solar projects throughout town. So, you know, whether or not we put solar on the building, we probably municipally will have, you know, plenty of of clean power to feed that building if AEC, you know, moves forward.
I'm just going to call on
It's just, you know, if you do, without crossing right aways, it's a little bit easier and putting up on the roof with battery storage is one option. That's all.
Again, something we'd be happy to look a little deeper at, you know, in the next, the next phases of design here.
So Mark Cameron's been itching to get in, and then Josiah, if you still want to talk, let me know.
He just said what I wanted to say.
Okay.
We did, we did talk a little bit about the solar and that and it being conducive to the the town, the historic district and the size of the roof and in the in the beneficial payoff of, it's not a huge roof in the in the direction in which it faces. And it just wasn't feeling like a very significant win in terms of the solar so far, but we're not, we haven't chalked it completely off the list. And in terms of the geothermal, like John was saying, we just hadn't gotten there with all of the answers. We just, we put a subcommittee together to vet out both upfront, long term payoff and We just, we put a subcommittee together to vet out, uh, both upfront, long-term payoff and operationally, if this is the right thing for Cohas. And if this is the right thing for our facility staff to have to undertake and maintain. And that's a part of it. It's not, you know, it's, we gotta, we gotta be able to use it and we gotta, so we've got to go through all these answers. We've got to, um, kick over some rocks and, and figure out what we've got.
Wayne?
I didn't bring this up at the meeting that, that we had before this meeting, before the previous meeting and stuff. But I was just wondering whether or not select board has, uh, sort of an extra $200,000 in some sort of a grant or fund that they could fund us immediately so that at the spring town meeting, we would be able to only ask for $500,000. But we would have gained three months of design work, which would make it that we could actually get the final money in the fall and get the bids for it before the spring town meeting next year, which would really help us out in the building schedule, being able to start in March and going on through to the, to the end of the year.
I, I would say, um, the answer is no, we don't have a slush fund. You know, I, I know that there's, you know, reserves, but that process is probably not worth going for. And Chris, if you feel differently, um, just let me know, but I think that's a hard no. As, as nice as it would be to have some flexibility to make expenditures, it, it's just the government's not set up that way. One of the questions, one of the comments that I have in, in a takeaway, I think for tonight is that, one of the, one of the challenges we had last time was not being able to talk about this, this cost or underestimating the need to talk about this chunk of money, 14 million, 13 million, 12 million, whatever it was last time, within the context of the rest of the town's, um, funds and the capital planning and what other things are going to come down the road. And, um, you know, when people say $14 million, well, $14 million compared to $2 million is a lot of money, but it's not compared to 70 million. Like you gotta, you have to put it into some context for people, not only in terms of their tax, the impact to their, their taxation, but also within the impact of other projects that the town is necessarily going to undergo, whether it's regional sewer projects or school renovation building, et cetera. We have to look long-term and that's, that's incumbent upon us on, on both the select board, working with advisory and capital. And I wonder, Chris, if that's something we can start working on ASAP, just sort of a financial management committee. Just, or, you know, working group, um, with some key people from, from key committees to kind of keep our eye on the ball of what the cost is and within which, what context are we going to be presenting the cost at various levels? Cause again, like $14 million for me, for renovation of a historic building and a, you know, a, a, a brand new 50-year beautiful building that meets our needs, um, isn't a lot of money, but to somebody else, it's a huge amount of money. So I think we need to contextualize it within capital budget and Sam's got his hand up. And, and maybe start working that, um, tangentially to the work that the building committee is doing. Sam?
No, I just wanted to throw this in because last time the project failed when it went to the voters on a ballot vote because we were doing it with excluded debt. I think you should be thinking about doing this with excluded debt. I'm doing some work with Don now, I haven't finished it, but it seems to me that if you don't do this with excluded debt, you're not going to be able to do any other capital projects for a while.
Right.
Throw that in.
Yeah, that's what I think we need to have that conversation of the number, where that number is in the context of everything else and how to build the financing around it, that's going to, that's going to make sense, not only for the town, but for the individual taxpayers. Jack?
Yes, can you hear me? I, they still have the, the, uh, the whole package on the front. I mean, on the set, I can't see myself. We have the, um, presentation slide is up.
They just stopped sharing the slide.
Right, stop sharing, right. Yeah, um, by the way, again, I'd like to echo the comments about what a great committee this is. I attended the, you know, the first, uh, three or four meetings. And I was just so impressed that they knew what they were doing. It was great. They did a great job. I do think that this is expensive. However, um, I think the square footage is right on, we need that square footage. People should be aware that the square footage is set up. So it's the interior of the building has no permanent partition, so you can reconfigure it down the line. I think the very important thing is that we have the square footage for public meetings. I can remember sitting in an affordable housing meeting on the second floor and a coffee table in the hallway, basically. And that's an important part of, um, democracy for, um, be, being able to meet with our boards and committees. Perhaps if there are some concerns, and I know there are some about the cost, perhaps something can be done internally, I'm not quite sure, but I think we're going to need this envelope. So I think it's, it's the appropriate size. And, uh, if you amortize it over 50 years, if it's a 50-year building, I think that makes a lot of sense. And it's always good to amortize over 50 years if you build a 50-year building. Which brings me to the second part, I think we need a commitment to, um, ongoing maintenance. So our 50-year building isn't a 25-year building, it's not maintained. And the other question that I have for engineering on the, on the HVAC, is that a water-based heat pump system? Is that what we're looking at? And you either temper the water through the, uh, pipes of the wells or you're tempering it some other way? I'm not quite sure I understand.
This is Stu Roberts with Johnson Roberts Associates. I believe what the engineers are proposing, it's an air system. So this is a variable refrigerant flow heat pump system. So this is, uh, uh, a system that's very energy efficient that is being used in a lot of efficient buildings now. The real key to, to variable refrigerant flow is basically, uh, it's like having the heat pumps on a, on a, on a regulator. So instead of having the system come full on and run full on and then go, when it satisfies the need, go off. We're able to throttle it so that it's throttled, uh, so that it meets the, the, the heating and cooling needs of the building. So it's a much more efficient system.
So you're not, you're, but you're pulling the BTUs out of air, not water, not liquid.
Out of air, not water. Now, if it was a geothermal system, it's basically the same system, you're just using the wells instead of the air source.
Yeah, well, I, I actually had looked into them and I, I, I used to manage buildings with air sourced heat pump systems. They're a nightmare, they were, I'm not sure they haven't been proved.
I think they've come a, a long ways and these new, uh, variable refrigerant flow systems are much more efficient, especially in cold climates than the, than the, than the heat pump systems of a few years ago. I'm not a mechanical engineer, but I, I, so I can't, that's about the extent of, of my ability to explain the system.
Okay.
Well, it's a far better system than a, than a heat pump. The older heat pump systems were not as, uh, dependably efficient.
Yeah, no, I used to manage buildings with them. I'm very familiar with them. And that's why I, I think the water source is a much better medium for, uh, transferring basically energy back and forth, which is what the system does. But anyway, overall, um, I, I, I think we're in the, we're certainly in the ballpark. And I think this committee's done a very good job and it's a very good looking building, by the way.
Great, thank you. Any other questions from the board, Carrie?
Yeah, just a comment, I love this, I love the flexible four floor plan. And I think we just need to consider as a town that this is a very, you know, conservative, classy, charming result that I think this committee's come up with and it's only going to get more expensive the more we put it off. So I just, I'm really excited about this and just kind of thinking broadly about our sense of community. And, you know, missing being with all of you in person and thinking about the value of having that space that residents can go and citizens can go and we can interact with our town staffers and employees. These types of buildings matter. And I think we need to value these types of buildings as a town and we need to send a message to our voters and, you know, the residents of town that this really does need to happen. So I'm, I'm just grateful for all of your work and I think it's a great plan.
Thanks, Carrie, you, you are our good PR agent. I couldn't agree with everything you said more. It, what's interesting is, um, Corey was elected in June and, um, I don't think I've physically been in his presence. And he, we've never had an in-person meeting, um, that he was at. So, I mean, it really, um, getting back into a town hall that can accommodate this very, very busy, um, group of volunteers that, um, are so dedicated is really important to all of us. And, and thank you all for this work, this, uh, this is tremendous. Chris, do you, do you want us to affirm their recommendation, which is to put together a warrant article asking for the document, uh, you know, cost to get us to these, um, construction and design documents?
I think it's their ask, so, so that, that, you know, I, I would strongly encourage the, the five of you. The only other thing I'd ask before that ask is, um, did you want me to recommend the, a next step to talk about finances after you make that decision?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I have that, that's, I, I came prepared with that, um, for, to this meeting. So, um, right now I would like to ask if there's a member of the board who would like to make a motion regarding the design fees and going to town meeting with that. And obviously the language of the Warren article would be fleshed out over the next couple of weeks.
I make a motion, we go forward with the design cost recommended at $700,000 as a warrant article for town meeting. Uh, this, this current town meeting.
Sounds good. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote, beginning with Jack.
Jack Creighton, I.
Corey Evans, I.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Paul Schubert, I.
Harry Thompson, I.
That's fantastic, thank you all so much. And then Chris, what I, what I think we should do is, is put together a subcommittee, maybe with capital advisory, a building committee, select board, chair, vice chair, and, and just start having those conversations about cost and financing and debt exclusion and everything else going on and getting it to a point where we're all really comfortable with what $14 million means in the context of all the town's needs and this building as well.
That's much like, um, the process that had been used in the past to try to move some of these things along in parallel. And having people have a free ability to have a conversation before you make any kind of decisions.
Right, just throw things up against a wall and, and also report back to the relevant committees. Cause I think that just this communication piece is amongst us is almost as important now as it's going to be getting it out to the public.
So, um, we'll, I'll talk to you more offline, we'll try to figure out a way to, for committees together. Semi-informally, and Don and myself and, uh, some of us.
Great. Town Hall Committee, thank you all so much, uh, this is really exciting. I, uh, you know, I've been a fan of this project in general for, uh, like 13 years. So I'm really pleased with the progress and where we're at right now, and I feel very good about it. So thank you.
Thank you very much for the support.
Thanks, Phil.
Moving forward.
Yeah, keep, keep us, uh, updated, it'll be fun to start regular updates. This is a, a exciting project for the town. Thanks, everyone. I'm, I'm going to move us along. We really don't have anything else on the agenda, I have no topics, not reasonably anticipated. So, um, unless anybody has anything else to say, oh, we didn't actually put select board or, or town, or town manager comments on here. So I think we'll just leave it at that and I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call.
Jack Creighton, I.
Corey Evans, I.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Paul Schubert, I.
Harry Thompson, I.
Okay, good night, everybody. Thank you.